The Planning and Zoning Commission of January 9, 2012 is now in session. May I have the roll call, please, from the Secretary?
Jim Frederick. Connie Yoshimura.
Present.
Bruce Phelps. Stacy Dean.
Here.
Terry Parks.
Here.
Dana Pruez. Richard Wilson.
Here.
Ray Hickel.
Present.
Peter Mukahy.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. I would also like to announce at this time, due to personal and family matters, Mr. Fredericks has resigned as of today from the Planning and Zoning Commission. He served on the Commission for five years, did a tremendous amount of work, and we wish him well in his future endeavors. The minutes. May I have a motion for approval for Monday, December 12, 2011? I'm sorry?
She'll move.
Terry Parks is moved, seconded by Richard Wilson. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing and hearing none, those minutes are approved. Special Order of Business disclosures. Mr. Parks, will you handle the disclosures, please?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Commissioner Deans?
None.
Commissioner Hickel?
None.
Mr. Wilson?
None.
Mr. Mukahy?
Yes, I think we're going to look at a couple cases that were originally discussed on October 10. I just want to point out, although I was not a Commissioner yet, I was present here during that meeting, so I was -- I did participate.
Thank you.
Commissioner Huhler?
No.
And I have none.
All right, thank you. Now, I think I should bring up the question for Mr. Hickel.
Ask for any disclosures of them, but he wasn't present.
Right. May I have any disclosures for anyone who was not present for any of the unfinished business and actions of the public hearing?
Oh, Hickel was not. Yeah, he was not. Yeah. I'd forgotten about him.
I'd like to thank the Chairperson for clearing this up for me. I was not present for case 2011-108 or 2010-100, therefore I will not be abstaining from voting on these two.
This then creates a short board, and the petitioner has the right to postpone if he so chooses. I have brought this forward ahead of schedule so that the petitioner can make a decision, and the audience participation will be advised.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Tim Potter with DOW HKM. With me tonight in the audience is Dr. Bance and John Schwann with APU. In discussing this, this is a very critical issue for APU, and we would appreciate coming back when there is a full board and commission. I don't think it does us or the general public and neighborhood justice to have just five members being able to act on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and we will schedule you, hopefully, for the next regular scheduled commission meeting. Okay. All right, so for those of you that are in the audience for case number 2011-108 or case 2010-100, those cases are postponed until the next available Planning and Zoning Commission. All right.
Madam Chair, we need to give the public a date certain on that, so I'd like to give you the date for the next regularly scheduled meeting.
All right.
February 6.
All right, February 6, at 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion for postponement?
All right.
Those cases and the other ones?
Oh, right, 108 and 100.
No, just those two. All right, so I need -- I would take a motion for postponement to February 6 from the Commission. Mr. Parks?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we postpone case 2011-108 and 2011-100 until our next meeting, which will be scheduled for February 6.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks and Mr. Wilson. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, those cases are postponed. We are now back to the Consent Agenda item, and I would entertain a motion for approval for all the items on the Consent Agenda. Mr. Parks?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we take the Consent Agenda and approve it as written.
All right, thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Stacy Dean, thank you very much for your second. Is there any objection to the resolutions for approval on any items 2 through 5? Seeing and hearing none, those resolutions are approved. Moving on from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda, there are no items on the Regular Agenda. We are ready to open the public hearing on case 2011-126. The procedure by which the public may speak to the Commission at its meeting is, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the timelines established in the Commission Rules of Procedures. A, petitioners, including all his or her representatives, 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. B, representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, 5 minutes. Individuals, 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the Commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the Commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any Commission decision within seven days. The public hearing is now open for case number 2011-126. The petitioner is the municipality of Anchorage. May we hear from the petitioner, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. My name's John Spring, for the record. I'm a project manager for AMATS, working on the 2035 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. We gave a work session a number of weeks, a couple of weeks ago, and I think several of you, most of you attended that work session, and we laid out what the intent of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan was at that time. But just to repeat a little bit, if you don't mind, the Planning and Zoning Commission is the Citizen Advisory Committee for the Anchorage Metropolitan Area Transportation Solutions Organization. This organization is the organization that's composed of state and local officials, and they're responsible for the expenditure of primarily federal transportation dollars. With that responsibility, of course, there's also some requirements. Federal regulations require that AMATS produce a long-range transportation plan, which nowadays we're calling the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, once every four years. The plan is a multimodal plan. It includes roadways improvement projects, transit improvement projects, bicycle and pedestrian projects also. The approach we took for this planning cycle was primarily to look at the old plan that was done four years ago and evaluate the projects that were already in that plan, and determine whether there needed to be additional projects added in order to meet the future transportation demands out to the year 2035. So in essence, it was more or less an update of the long-range transportation plan. But there were several very important sub-area plans that were done since that last update, which gave us some more projects to consider, which we hadn't considered in the past. Some of those planning studies included the Downtown Comprehensive Plan, the Hillside District Plan, and the Eagle River Circulation Study. Also, there was, during that interim, there was a couple functional plans that were also approved by, I think, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Assembly, involving pedestrian plan for Anchorage, bicycle plan, and there was an update on the Transit Five-Year Plan. So the planning staff took all those recommendations that were within those plans done in the interim and added them to the old plan and came up with what you see here in front of you. The public involvement process that we utilized was very extensive, even though it was, as I say, more or less an update of the existing plan. We did a number of things, I think, probably were unique, that we'd never done before in this planning cycle, in order to enhance our public involvement process. One of the things we did, which we always do in this case, is create a Citizen Advisory Committee, composed not only of the Technical Advisory Committee, but people from the community representing large stakeholder groups, to advise us as we go through the process and give us input on our planning ideas. They participated, I think, probably over eight or so meetings during the length of the planning process. We also, for the first time in this case, or second time, actually, I think about eight years ago, we also included a newspaper insert in the Anchorage Daily News, as well as the all the other, I think, the Eagle River newspaper, and also translated it into three other languages, trying to elicit some comments from people who don't ordinarily comment or participate in transportation planning projects like this. One of the most controversial comments that we got as part of our review was probably the Kinnick Arm Crossing project. This project is, next to the Glen, the Seward Highway connection project, is the probably most expensive project in the plan. There were people in favor of it, and there were people opposed to it. This project is required to be included in the long-range transportation plan due to federal regulations. It is considered to be a regionally significant project, and as a result, we're required to include it in our plan in order for it to be approved by the Federal Highway Administration. This particular project, the Kinnick Arm Crossing, already has an environmental impact statement, a record of decision, which has been approved by FHWA and FTA. So it's basically ready to be implemented at this point. On your table, you'll see there's some additional comments that weren't in your original packet. These comments came in just in the last couple of days or so. You might see, I think you see there, the Suburso Board, the Chugiak, Birchwood, Eagle River Road, Rural Road Service Area Board has a comment. And I think Bob French and the Rabbit Creek Community Council, Ternikin Arm Community Council, and then two individuals have submitted comments. Some of those comments are more or less a reiteration of comments that we've received in the past. Several of them have commented on, questioned the length of time available between the time that this public hearing was advertised and not being sufficient for them to give proper response and comment at the public hearing. With respect to that, I'd like to just go a little bit into some detail about the length of the process we've been going through and the opportunities to understand or to know when this public hearing was to be held, et cetera. The two phases of this planning process. First public draft that came out on October 1 of 2011 was a public review draft. The public review draft is the initial draft that the public gets to take a look at and make comments on. The idea is that if we can incorporate the comments of the public in the first round of review and put it in the public hearing draft, which is what you have in front of us, then we can reduce the amount of testimony perhaps, or the amount of changes from the public hearing draft in the final draft. We had about 33 individuals, as well as four community councils and other organizations, making comments on the public review draft. And I think there was something like 230 unique, separate comments. You'll see in the packet that we have Appendix A is the staff summary of those comments. Each individual comment was included in that list that's in Appendix A. You'll find, I think, also that the AMATS staff took those comments very seriously and incorporated many of the changes that were asked for by the individual commenters. As a result, I think, the public hearing draft that you have in front of you largely reflects the changes that were requested by the public. There are, of course, some that weren't, and probably you'll hear some of those tonight. Based on those comments and the recommendations from the AMATS Technical Advisory Committee, the public review draft was changed to reflect the comments and the recommendations from the TAC, and that's what you have in front of you. The notice for the public hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission has been public information for probably six weeks or more. Every public meeting we've had since October 1, we produced a schedule of opportunities for public input. Those opportunities, of course, include this public hearing, as well as an opportunity in the future to testify at a public hearing that will be held by the Municipal Assembly. Also, another opportunity would be for the public, the AMATS Policy Committee, to hear from the public. It's been, the comment response summary that you have in the packet in Appendix A has also been on the website for, since October 8, when it was approved by a Technical Advisory Committee. Those comments and the recommendations of the TAC were available for the public to take a look at for almost a month now. So it was possible for an individual who made a comment to see how their comment was treated by the AMATS Technical Advisory Committee. And it wasn't like we were just laid it on the table in the last couple of days or so. This response summary's been available for quite some time. With that, I think one other item I'd like to mention, too. On the table in your packet there, that was laid on the table, is an addendum to the public hearing draft. There's a number of items that we found after reviewing it, once we got the hard copy, where there were some changes, some errors, and primarily technical errors. There's a couple of errors that you may hear about in the next few minutes during public testimony, but the majority of them involve problems with formatting the plan, getting the graphs right. There are some transpositions of some of the data and some of the tables, those type of things. I don't believe that there's any really substantive errors in the plan that you have, but we felt it was probably worthwhile, definitely worthwhile, to include those in your packet so that when you recommend approval of the plan and make a motion for approval, you'll have the fully updated plan in front of you. With that, I'll close my presentation.
Sorry, are there any questions of staff at this time? Well, I do have one question, which is, of the comments that have been laid on the table, there is several comments relating to the timing of the document, which seems to be the subject of tonight's public hearing was released only four days ago. Is that accurate or not accurate? Or is it with the amendments that was only released four days ago, or what's the situation?
Yes, Madam Chair. The references to an email that we sent out to AMATS email list, and I think, how many are there, Craig? There must be 300, 400 individual emails that we sent out notifying them of the public hearing tonight. However, we did comply with the Planning and Zoning Commission requirements for public notice. It was included in the public notice for the cases that are to be held this night, and that was done December 19. It was notified three weeks before this particular public meeting. So we met the requirements of the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing notice.
All right.
And as I say before, we've had this public hearing notified in our schedule for all of our public meetings since the beginning of October, so it's not, it wasn't unknown that they were going to have a public hearing now.
I guess the question would be, was all the material available online or physically available to be picked up?
Yes, it was available prior to that reference, the four days before. It was available on the, again, on the 19th, right? Well, no, it was available, sorry. It was posted on December 27.
Is that, it was posted online, December 27?
That's right.
Okay, are there any other questions? All right, seeing and hearing no other questions. The Commission is requested, just let me remind everyone, the Commission is requested to hold a public hearing to receive community comment on the public hearing draft of the 2035 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and then to make recommendations to the Municipal Assembly and AMATS Policy Committee regarding adoption of the plan. With that, the public hearing is now open. If you are here to testify, could I ask you to please come forward and sit in the front of the room, because it looks like we've got quite a few people here to testify tonight. Please come forward for case 2011-126. Okay, would you, we'll take them, and then if you would state your name, if you represent a group, or if you are speaking as an individual.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and other Commissioner members. My name is Bob French, and I am the President of the Government Hill Community Council, although for tonight, these comments are my own. I'm glad to hear that you had a chance to have a workshop on these documents, but I would like to take some issue with what Mr. Spring just said. He said that the changes have been available for a month on the website. I believe that would have been the December 8 set of documents. I received the AMATS updates, and I don't believe that there was any notice given in those updates that those materials were available on December 8. I also didn't receive any notice that the full package of the public hearing draft comments were available until last Thursday. And I think that if you look at what is on the website, it will actually show that those materials were posted, the last ones were posted on January 3. So I think that what Mr. Spring said is not entirely correct. One of the, being able to demonstrate fiscal constraint of this MTP is the major difference between the 2027 LRTP and what we have in front of us to look at. I continue to be concerned that the fiscal assumptions being made about the Kinnick Arm Bridge are both contrary to the requirements that were set when the Kinnick Arm Crossing was added to the LRTP, and that the assumptions are not consistent and don't follow common sense. Reading, the Federal Highways had a letter that was provided to AMATS on April 8 of 2011, and it basically said it was their certification review letter. That letter outlined several corrective actions that were required by AMATS, and that in order for Federal Highways to certify this plan, those corrective actions need to be taken. So I'm going to go ahead and read some time, or read out some of those key recommendations that Federal Highways had. It says, "We understand that Cabada is responsible for their work in forecasting revenues from transportation pricing policies for construction and operation of the Kinnick Arm Crossing. AMATS should monitor and revise policies and practices, if necessary, to ensure that pricing is included in demonstrations of fiscal constraint for the LRTP and the TIP. This may include documentation supporting projected pricing strategies. The documentation needs to match the assumed revenues within the timeframes that are included in the plan. AMATS should work in collaboration with stakeholders to develop a system-level analysis addressing the implications of proposed tolling to support the implementation of the proposed Kinnick Arm Crossing. Analysis should be consistent with environmental justice, land use, air quality, and other system-wide impacts referenced." End quote. "I'm concerned that Table 5.4 of the MTP update includes two vastly different traffic estimates. The AMATS ICER estimate of 37,100 days, I'm sorry, 100 daily trips in 2035 assumes a no toll, that there will be no toll required to cross the bridge. That is compared against Cabada's estimate of 36,000 daily trips with a toll. To compare a no toll versus a toll traffic count is clearly not consistent and clearly not in compliance with Federal Highways corrective action requirements. The obvious question that Table 5.4 brings to mind is, what is the AMATS ICER traffic count if you do include a toll? We asked, and it took a public records request for DAPUF to get them to release that data. The answer is about half."
Does anyone have any questions of the Speaker?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. May the next person please come forward that wants to give testimony?
Hello, and thank you for your service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Lois Epstein, and I serve on the AMATS Technical Advisory Committee as the representative for the Air Quality Advisory Group. I'm a licensed engineer in Alaska and the Director from 2007 to 2010 of the Alaska Transportation Priorities Project, nonprofit transportation watchdog organization. I'm speaking today for myself. Please note my strong concern that the public only had since last Thursday to review the full amount of the voluminous material that we've been, that we're commenting on tonight. While serving on the AMATS TAC, it became clear to me that the Committee's state and municipal representatives were not asking the necessary hard questions of the Kinnick Arm Bridge and Toll Authority. Why else would it be acceptable for the TAC to assume that daily traffic would be roughly the same in 2035 with a approximately $16 round-trip toll using Cabada's model versus no toll, as in the AMATS model, i.e. with both models showing around 36,000 average daily traffic? This is true even after the Federal Highway Administration admonished AMATS to make sure that its analyses and data were consistent in the MTP. Likewise, even though Jamie Kenworthy in August 2010 showed the TAC that Cabada was including four lanes of revenue but only two lanes of cost in its pro forma financial plan, plan, why did the TAC carry that error forward into the draft MTP? On page 7-24, Table 7-4, neither project 140 nor 218 includes the cost of paving four lanes across the bridge, but with 36,000 AADT, four lanes would be essential. The cost of such paving could be substantial. Additionally, why did the TAC not require that the high cost of financing the Kinnick Arm Bridge be clearly documented in the draft MTP, including the 12% cumulative rate of return for the private investor? Another important concern I have about the bridge is that the project scored very low in terms of the AMAT screening process, with a score of 12 out of a possible 30 points. See page 7-9. Many higher-scoring projects will not be constructed due to the fiscal constraint requirements of the MTP. Last, the draft MTP states that AMAT chose, quote, "conservative assumptions to avoid underestimating the future traffic volumes using the bridge," unquote, page 5-18. Ironically, AMAT chose not to use conservative financial assumptions regarding the bridge. Should there be a significant toll revenue shortfall, the draft MTP assumes the state will cover the shortfall, end quote, "not adversely affect the amount of state funds anticipated to be committed within the AMAT's area," unquote, page 6-30. Given that the shortfall could be over $1 billion in total during the time period of the MTP, as the Dr. Kenworthy's analysis has shown, which you should have received today, is it reasonable to assume that legislators from other parts of the state will not reduce state funding to AMAT's for its other projects? Thank you very much for your attention to these comments. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from Commissioners? Well, I have a question. On page, on page three of our packet, it says, "The TAC recommendation to separate the Kinnick Arm Crossing project into a separate chapter was rejected." Can you elaborate a little bit on the Technical Advisory Committee's request to separate the Kinnick Arm Crossing into a separate chapter?
I can tell you, Madam Chair, what I recall, and I believe there was a meeting after the one that I attended that I wasn't at, so things may have changed. But when I voted on that, it, there was a vote to separate it into two, its own chapter, as was the case in the 2027 Long Range Transportation Plan, now the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And it was thought that it was different enough that it made sense to keep it separate. We then heard from the contractors that they, that would take a fair amount of time, and they didn't think that it necessarily made sense to do that, even though that was something that they had asked us to consider on the TAC. So it's possible that at the next meeting, that that was changed, but I was not involved. What the contractors did do is they, they put a summary table that enabled me to actually save a little bit of time when I worked on this this weekend, to find the Kinnick Arm Bridge. But there are some other parts of the document where it is included that had to be checked as well. So it really would have been helpful to have had it as its own chapter.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this matter? Please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Barton. I'm the Chairman of the Municipal ADA Commission. I'm also an employee of Access Alaska here in Anchorage, which is an independent living center for people with disabilities. And I'm also here as an individual. I've been involved with the MTP creation of this process since the beginning of the year. I was on the TAC Plus part of it. And there are a few things that weren't included in the transportation deficiency analysis part of it, and in the public involvement part of it. And I'm just going to list them right here at six. I have a little handout I'd like to put in the record, or at least deliver it to you without going into too much detail, but I'd like to highlight what a couple of those are. The first one is, when viewed in its entirety, equal opportunity to access the usage of the taxi system has a key component of our transportation network here, and the taxi system in practice really isn't adequately serving our citizens, not just our citizens, but our tourists with disabilities that come into the state. Equal opportunity to participate in the usage of a lodging facility shuttle services. As you drive around town, you look at the hotel buses, see if you can count how many actually are accessible that have a ramp or lift attached to them. Hardly any of them do. Okay? Improved transportation options to and through the military bases to access employment opportunities. Now, this is a tough nut to crack on this one, and I don't expect a solution anytime soon on this because of the security features that are on the federal facility, and it's a very difficult issue to solve. And I know our public transportation agencies are really wrestling with it and trying to do the best they can with it. But that, the one reason I bring it up is it is a transportation deficiency, and it should be highlighted in the plan. Whether or not we can solve it or not, it should be highlighted because it is a deficiency, along with all these other ones I'm listing. Equal opportunity to access a transportation option to emergency shelters, and things like a homeless, domestic, or elder abuse shelter, emergency evacuation out of the city in case of natural disaster. The fifth one, need to improve accessible parking enforcement, design, and maintenance at public as well as private entities. That is part of our transportation network. Number six, some specific path of travel challenges within the pedestrian transportation network. There are some that are covered, and they're very well documented, and I believe the city's done an excellent job in the last five years in trying to improve its pedestrian facilities, especially during the winter months. But there are still a few things that I think that we should focus on for a few specific types of disabilities, including those for the blind. Some of those would be improved safety for ensuring clear sightlines between right-turning vehicular traffic and street-crossing pedestrians by minimizing visual architectural barriers like a business sign, or landscaping, or signal boxes, traffic lights, because that person that's turning that right-hand side cannot see that bicycle rider, or that person with a disability coming down to cross the street. So that may help with safety issues. And varying the length of time in pedestrian street crossings from summer and winter seasons on larger streets and vehicular corridors with multiple lanes. And there's a lot of different solutions you can do for that. But I thank you for your time, and I'd like to submit this for the record.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this matter? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Kessler, and I'm a resident of Government Hill, and I'm testifying for myself. Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to present before you this evening. I wanted to continue what Mr. French had been talking about in terms of some of the questionable numbers in the Kinnick Arm Crossing documents in the MTP update. And so I just wanted to go over a few more numbers with you. And, but before I do that, I just want to emphasize, I have to say personally, I'm a little struck by the lack of questions coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I realize that might be a foolish thing to say, since I'm now the one standing up here, and if you decide to ask questions, I may get to be the one that answers them. But I just wanted to state my concern that we are talking very large sums of money, and we're talking about a tremendous potential impact on Anchorage, not only, not only in the impact that the bridge might have, but the deleterious impact in that it will start sucking funding for all of the other transportation projects within Anchorage. And so I strongly encourage you all to take a look at the real finances of the Kinnick Arm Bridge document that's included in your packet. It's a short, five-page document, and it really goes through, in quite a bit of detail, the monetary issues and the very questionable numbers that the Kinnick Arm Bridge and Toll Authority have been using in their analyses. I guess one of the things I want to talk about, we could, we could spend an awful lot of time talking about population estimates, and toll estimates, and daily traffic, da-da-da-da-da-da. That is all in the document. I encourage you to read it and study it, and, and when it's convenient for you. But one of the things I really do want to talk about are the costs, the overall costs, and the estimates that the Kinnick Arm Crossing and Bridge Toll Authority are providing you versus what are the real numbers. And what we're looking at is just a phenomenal difference of multiple billions between what they're providing in terms of their, both on the revenue side and the cost side. They've overestimated the toll revenue, they've underestimated the costs, they have counted on funding that they're not going to get, i.e. 300 million from the federal government, either from a TFIYA grant or a Tiger grant. They have over, as we've talked about, they've overestimated population and daily toll trips, so they've increased their revenue a tremendous amount. They have not taken into account in their analyses the actual impact of having a toll, as Bob mentioned, those 36,000 daily trips in 2035 are based on no toll. Iser did a, Iser's analysis shows that if you incorporate a toll, those daily trips drop down to about 18,000. That's a huge shortfall, and, excuse me, shortfall in toll. So again, please, I beg of you all to look at that document closely. Thank you.
Before you leave, are there, we do have some questions for you. You've stimulated us to...
Great.
Mr. Volkey?
No, I'm sorry, my question was of the previous speaker, but his handout answered my question.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
I wondered if I could, through the chair, ask John Spring to comment on the, on the issue of estimates for revenue and expenses.
Yes, through the chair. This has been a very time-consuming issue for the AMATs to deal with, and I think we've given it quite a bit of thought and listened to a lot of testimony on it. It's not AMAT's job to come up with a pro forma plan for Cabada. It's up the AMATs to, to determine which projects, however, get into the long-range transportation plan, and which ones are needed for the region to grow, and to meet the congestion needs of the, of the region, and particularly the AMAT's area. The, it is something, however, that the state of Alaska is going to have to look at with a lot of scrutiny, I believe, before they start giving money. In this case, there is a bill in the legislature that's currently active, and it's going to be considered this next session, which would provide $150 million availability loan to Cabada in order to take care of, in order to fund the short-term shortfall in tolls needed to pay off the loans and the bonds that are going to be sold to construct this project. Another part of that legislation is a commitment by the state to fund any other shortfalls that are going to happen as a result of this bridge going through. So it is the responsibility of the state to take a close look at it. It is beyond really AMAT's ability to do a pro forma and to do a secondary or a third-party review of the Cabada financial estimates. The, with respect to the number of trips over the bridge, that's something that, again, we're in AMAT's area, and we do take seriously our charge, which is to estimate what the population projection's going to be in Anchorage, and how that's going to be distributed throughout Anchorage and Eagle River, and come up with the real concrete estimates of, of the traffic in the future for the AMAT's area streets. We relied primarily on Cabada's modeling to determine what's, what kind of traffic they'll get over the bridge, with the assumption that Cabada has a lot more resources than we do, and ability to fund the necessary studies in order to determine what is a reasonable estimate. Our estimate, which I believe you referred to, which was not actually our, the AMAT's estimate, it was done as a part of the highway, the old highway-to-highway project, has not been validated, or it's not been approved by the AMAT's Policy Committee. So with understanding, I think that they, they don't feel comfortable putting their stamp of approval on any, any modeling effort that we would do for the bridge. We don't have a good handle on what the growth is going to be like in the Matsu Valley. We don't know what the distribution of that growth is going to be, where the jobs are expected to be. We have to rely primarily on other sources for that information. So we can't really say override Cabada's effort in estimating what the number of trips are going to be over the bridge. We just aren't in position to do that. We can't tell them that whatever numbers we come up with are better than theirs, because we obviously haven't put the resources into that kind of, that kind of study that they have.
So I guess as a follow-up question to you, ma'am, I would ask the question whether or not there are any independent resources out there that those of you that are opposed to Cabada and the bridge have been able to utilize in order to create more specific numbers as far as potential traffic on the bridge, the toll, and the cost of the bridge?
The numbers that we have been using in our analysis, and that are used in the document in your packet, are from Iser and have been updated. And with all due respect to Cabada and Wilbur Smith, I think that Iser's track record is well-proven within the state of Alaska, and there's such an astounding difference between the Iser numbers and the Wilbur Smith numbers. We're not talking about, you know, a 1% or 2% difference. We're talking that basically the Cabada numbers have doubled the Iser numbers. You go from about 18,000 trips a day, which is what Iser has projected, to 36,000, which was projected by Wilbur Smith and Cabada. I would say that I, as I said earlier, Iser has a very, very strong track record within the state of Alaska, and the updated Iser numbers are actually consistent with the census projections and census numbers that have also come out. I also think that, as Bob mentioned, and as you've heard a little bit, we've actually detected, we've discovered population assumptions and errors that are involved, that are in the Cabada estimates for population within the Matsu area. For example, they are, the growth that is projected to meet the, the number of households and trips would be basically the equivalent of a Palmer, you know, a growth in the population in the Matsu area of a Palmer a year from, you know, now going forward for many, many years. And I think that strains credibility. I just think that that doesn't pass the laugh test, or the, excuse me, the smile test at all.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to testify? Anyone else at all?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Walter Parker. My present duties, I'm the U.S. Delegate to the Arctic Council, primarily in transportation and communications and marine safety, and also a senior fellow at the Institute of North, where I do pretty much the same things. I followed Cabada and the others closely, and...
Excuse me, just one minute. Are you speaking as an individual or a representative from a group?
I'm individual.
Thank you.
All right. Anyway, the, you've heard enough on Nick Crossing. I've been studying Nick Crossing since 1976, when I was Highway Commissioner, and did it last time for the state on ferries and what have you. And this project is still in very bad shape on its demographics and on its connections to the Anchorage Bowl. The Highway-to-Highway project is, has not been enough put out on it yet to have any idea... idea what the effect that will have on several major hoods, neighborhoods in Anchorage, and it needs a great deal of attention. And then the project, part of which you are not hearing tonight, on the UMed access, we've been having several community council meetings on UMed access, and hopefully we'll have a report out shortly on that. But those three areas are what I regard as the weakest part of our transportation relationship to overall urban planning now. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify on Case 2011-126? Seeing and hearing no one else, the public testimony is closed. What is the wish of the commission? And are there any, any question, any further questions that the commission might have of staff?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wilson?
Through the chair, if I might ask John Spring again another question about, one of the comments made about the, a large project will take a lot of the resources for, for a while away from other things that could be done. What, can you give us a sense of the, I don't know which page it's on right here, but the rush hour, red, yellow, green, you know, blockages going in the morning and the evening rush hours? Will, to, to what extent will those red areas be affected by, by a project? I mean, are you taking care of the red areas even with the large project? I guess that's what I'm getting to.
Yes, through the chair. We do extensive transportation demand modeling as a part of the planning process, and we look at what's, what kind of congestion is on the roadway system today, and we compare, then, what happens when we implement the projects in the future. And given the growth and the increase in, in travel, what's the effect on the red, as you say? And the red, for those who may not understand the term, involves a, the way we map and our congestion by intersections and by roadways. Anything that's over Level Service D, E, or F is kind of reddish color, and that's considered to be unacceptable level congestion. Anything below that, A, B, and C, which is lighter color of green and blue usually on the map, means that it's entirely acceptable. So one of the objectives, and this certainly isn't the only objective of the plan, is to try to achieve an acceptable level of congestion. The, with the projects that are included in the plan as recommendations, the vast majority of the future congestion will be relieved. There will be pockets, however, where it, it won't have an impact and where there'll be continued congestion. And this might be some areas where we might want to consider something like a higher, allowing a higher level of congestion. One of those areas is the Midtown District. Midtown District is growing faster, is the fastest-growing employment area in town. The UMed District is a close second, probably, and it's suspected to continue to grow very rapidly in the future. And the opportunities to relieve the congestion in the Midtown area are very limited unless you want to start expanding all the roads, you know, to, and taking out major businesses and office buildings. You really can expand the roadway system there. So we're going to have to take a look at the Midtown area as a separate study and see how we can affect the future congestion of that area other than perhaps adding more street capacity. And it might involve, I'm recommending, I guess, what, one of the things in the plan is to finally go ahead with the Midtown District Plan. Midtown District Plan, if it has concrete land use recommendations, you might be able to organize the land use in Midtown so that you minimize the amount of congestion, put the higher density in some areas which, where it can handle, where the roadway system can handle it, and maybe lower some of the densities in areas which can handle it. So that's one area. Beyond that, I think the, the, what we're calling now the Seward and Glen Highway Connection Project, which used to be the Highway to Highway Project, does a lot to reduce the future congestion in Anchorage. When you look at the current situation, you see that most of the congestion that's occurring is in the northeast area of town, as well as the Midtown area, anywhere between Muldoon and like, and 36th Avenue. That area has the most congestion. Highway to Highway Project really is designed to try to take, rather, the Seward and Glen Connection Project is really designed to try to relieve that congestion. And the modeling shows that, yes, indeed, it does do a very good job of, of reducing it, of congestion without having to expand a lot of the other arterial streets in the northeast section of town from four to six or eight lanes. So because of that, I think we see a really substantial reduction in congestion, with the exception, however, of the Midtown area.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Mr. Mulkey?
Yeah, a couple. Well, first, the, the handout public hearing draft, 2035 amendment, that you provided, I really appreciate that, but to be frank, the color-coded graphs at the end, my eyes are too old to, I can't distinguish the gray shading, so your graphs, well, the graph's okay, but the charts, the maps, I can't distinguish them, so I could use...
Through the chair, I apologize for that. We got a new color copier at the planning section today, and it was beyond my abilities to learn how to use it in about five minutes' time, otherwise I would have made a color copy.
And I think I did have some questions on that, so I don't know if you addressed them or not. Second, you handed out, you mentioned Attachment A has, addresses all the, the public comments. So are those incorporated into the document that's in front of us? Are those amendments or changes that have been made before approval? What's, again, the status of the...
Yes, through the chair. Appendix A includes all the comments that we received prior to the publication of the public hearing draft that you have in front of you. There's several different types of recommendations. The numbered recommendations are the ones that we made, the TAC, the Technical Advisor Committee of AMATS, made a recommendation specifically. You'll see, it says whether or not it recommends a change based on the comment, and it also will tell you what specifically is the change that is to be made. There's other cases where it says the TAC disagrees with the comment, does not recommend the change for this reason or another. There's another, a number of comments that are coded 88 to 99, which are considered, I guess AMATS Technical Advisor Committee's considered those to be more or less just opinions or, or a comment that need not be addressed specifically. All the comments that the TAC, you see in that appendix, which the TAC said, recommended a change, have been included in the new, updated public hearing draft. So it reflects only those changes that the TAC recommended to be made.
Did the page references get updated? Because I was trying to track some of these between here and there, and I can't get from your Attachment A to the document. So I'm, and I trust you that, that they've been made. I'd kind of like to see them in context, so without rereading...
Through the chair. That's a good point, I believe. Yes, those refer, those page references were to the public review draft. We went through, have you ever used Word, Microsoft Word?
I'm an Apple guy.
Well, yeah, I think I'm, and I'm never going to use Word again, but the decision was made to convert the Word document into new software, InDesign. And this isn't advertisement for InDesign, but InDesign's considered to be a lot easier to make amendments to. As a result of that change in software, the page, page numbering changed quite a bit because, yeah.
Yeah, so, so in the 40-hour, whatever we've been, for me to crosswalk these changes to the document's been a bit of a challenge. Okay, good. The gentleman who provided us the handout of American with Disabilities, have you had a chance to, to look at those? Have those been, specifically, one of the things, I didn't see the military mentioned at all, and I noticed you mentioned the, the military bases and access on it, and I didn't see any, how do we call any references in there, in the document, how we address connectivity to the bases?
Through the chair. Connectivity to the bases is important. AMATS doesn't have jurisdiction over the roadway system within the bases, so we don't make any recommendations for improvements. We did have on our, our Technical Advisory Committee, helping us with the planning process, person from Homeland Security who, do we have somebody from the bases too? I think it was just Homeland Security.
Chuck Madden.
And we went out and talked quite a bit, and I think it appeared that their most critical issue was emergency access along the Glen Highway. There's a couple of things, recommendations, we have in there, in the plan to address that concern. One of them is a new project, which would construct a new frontage road on the north side of Glen Highway between Muldoon Road and Boniface, which would provide an alternative access in case of blockage. It would also provide alternative access to the Cotton Center, which is a rapidly growing retail area and is producing some congestion effects around the interchange there. In addition, we realized that we may need to extend that frontage road even further up to Ega River, and we've recommended a study along the corridor there to assess the need for emergency access, emergency frontage road connection from Muldoon through the Ega River area. I think from my understanding of, in talking with the Homeland Security and people in the military, that seems to be their most pressing issue, and I think we tried to address that. Oh, sorry, Madam Chair, I forgot to neglect, we did have somebody from J.B.R. on our Technical Advisory Committee, Chuck Moni, who participated in the development of the plan.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions of staff at this time? What is the wish of the commission at this time? Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept this and forward it to the Assembly for approval.
It is seconded by Ms. Dean. Do you have any additional comments that you wish to make? And Mr. Parks, would that be with the corrections, the technical edits that have been laid on the table?
Yes, as well as can be interpreted that we received.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any comments from other commissioners at this time? Well, I have a comment that, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson, and then Mr. Mulkey.
When will be the next time that we see a revision of the, of this plan?
Through the chair. The requirements of federal regulations is to update it every four years.
Four years.
So you have to see it again. In fact, I think we decided that we'll probably start as soon as we get this one adopted, so we get it in on time. No, that's, that's a joke.
Well, just a suggestion from one commissioner, if, if we could get these documents more than a few days ahead of time, and also to the public, of course, that's very important to this commission and to, to them. And see what we can do about color copying, too.
Commissioner Mulkey?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I didn't. I'm sorry. I'm real tough trying, trying to figure out, vote on this, because there are some really important amendments that have been brought forward, and again, just not having a chance to read them in context and make sure that the intent has been carried over, I personally could, would really appreciate a little more time.
All right. Well, let me see, we have a motion to approve with a seconded. I'm not sure, I have to ask the secretary. What I'm hearing correctly is you would like to postpone this vote and recommendation to the Assembly so that we could have more time to study the material. Is that, is that...
Yeah, I think I would have to ask for that.
Okay.
There's enough here that, again, that's a pretty extensive attachment, and some of that's pretty substantive, and I'd like to make sure it's, it fits in.
So do we have a second to that motion? I'll second the motion? I can't second the motion? Oh, okay. Okay, so do we have another second? Is there another second to the motion? And Ms. Dean? Okay. So we have a motion to postpone. Is there an objection to postponing? And how long would you like the postponement to be?
I'd be fine with the next meeting.
At the next meeting. Is there any objection to this motion? Seeing and hearing none, this Case 2011-126 is postponed to the next meeting. The public hea, no more public hearing. The public hearing is closed. We're going to take a short, five-minute break, and then we will come back. Thank you very much. All right, the Planning and Zoning Commission of January 9th, 2012 is now in session. We are at Case Number 2012-002. This is a request to rezone B1A Local and Neighborhood Business District approximately from the R3 Multiple Family Residential Zoning at the McCray subdivision. Do we have the petitioner's representative?
It's me.
All right.
We have staff first.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have staff first.
Right.
I am sorry, Ms. Iverson. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All night.
This is Case 2012-002 on December 19th, 2011. 159 public hearing notices were mailed to properties within 600 feet of the petition site. As of this, as of now, we received a public hearing notice, public hearing notices that were received and laid on the table. You guys actually got two packets. One packet was hand-delivered here this evening, and the other is in the package. Supplemental comments also included in that, I just want to point out, was the resolution that was passed by the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2001 regarding the same property. So this is a request to rezone approximately .41 acres from R3 to B1A. And I need to start off by explaining a recent ordinance that was passed by the Assembly and impacts this rezoning request. Assembly Ordinance 2011-93 was adopted on September 27th, 2011. The complete text of that ordinance is included as an attachment in Section 5. This ordinance amended AMC 214140 to allow a pilot program for mixed-use development in the B1A district. In advance of final passage of the Title 21 rewrite, this will provide an opportunity to test development standards for B1, mixed-use development in B1A. In addition, the ordinance made two key changes regarding... In addition, the ordinance made two key changes regarding mixed-use development. The ordinance reduced the minimum contiguous area needed for a rezone from 40,000 square feet to 12,000 square feet, and it created an alternative development design review process that is an administrative site plan review. The alternative development design review allows dimensional requirements to be modified, including characteristics of use such as parking and landscaping. The application for an alternative development design will be approved through an administrative site plan review, and includes submittal requirements and threshold criteria to ensure the development is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The intent of this was to first bring forward dimensional and use standards from the provisionally adopted land use code, and second, to create a flexible and expedited administrative review process as a pilot program. The petitioner has included a concept site plan for the forthcoming mixed-use development. Concept review generally establishes that the proposed use and zoning is appropriate and does not include precise design or site plan. The final site plan will be reviewed administratively according to the design criteria, the alternative development design criteria that was established in the ordinance. At this time, the development concept is for a mixed-use project with a 3,000-square-foot bistro and eight residential units that are less than 800 square foot each. The commercial building will be located on the northeast corner near the intersection of Northern Lights Boulevard and Turnigan Street. The residential units will be on the south side of the lot with alley access and adjacent to existing residential uses. The findings for this case, first, addressing conformity to the comprehensive plan, this proposed rezone will support the following policies and strategies in the Anchorage 2020. It supports residential policy number 14, no new residential development at densities less than identified in neighborhood or district plans is discouraged, and no regulatory action under Title 21 shall result in a conversion of dwelling units or residentially-zoned It also is, the rezone supports land use policy number 5, that rezones shall be in compatible scale with adjacent uses and consistent with the goals and policies of Anchorage 2020. I'll address that later, so I'll hold that for that time. And also, land use policy number 7, avoiding incompatible uses. The West Anchorage District Plan, which has not been approved by the Assembly but was recently approved and forwarded by this body, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, designated this site as appropriate for small-scale commercial and appropriate for B1A zoning. For, in terms of the findings, again, a zoning map amendment has to meet the following standards of approval. The effect of the development on the surrounding develop, on the surrounding neighborhood in terms of environment, land use, and transportation. The Department finds that this standard is met, the use will be subject to the, the regular noise and clean air and ordinances. In regards to land use, we find that this rezone is compatible with adjacent residential uses. The subject property is surrounded by R3 and R2M property, which is currently developed as office and multifamily. There are currently several three-story apartment buildings to the west along Northern Lights, and land use is scaled down to R1 single-family development on the other side of Northern Lights. Given the concept site plan, the commercial building will be orientated toward the intersection and away from residential uses, and the residential use on the site will be adjacent to existing residential uses and impact, and buffer the impact of the commercial use. The dimensional standards allowed by Wright and B1A District are as restrictive, and in some cases more restrictive, than those allowed in R3. Regarding transportation, this site has access onto Turnigan Street, Northern Lights, and a 20-foot alley to the south. In addition, because the site is located on a bus and bike route, it is well-located to encourage pedestrian and bicycle trips. Given the frontage on three sides, the site has numerous points of access to serve the vehicle traffic generated by a mixed-use project. If, during final site plan review, the mix of uses at the peak traffic count, at the peak hour, is, if at the final site plan, the mix of uses, the peak hour traffic count is greater than 100 trips, then a TIA will be required. Upon initial review of the site plan with traffic engineering, they do not foresee a problem allowing left-hand turns onto Turnigan. And also, it's important to note that project management and engineering is currently in concept phase for improvements to Turnigan Street. We also have a standard regarding the supply of land in the economically-relevant area. We find that this standard is met, as there is no publicly, public commercially-zoned property in the Turnigan community. Residents have to either drive to Spinard or to Minnesota to meet their commercial needs. And as documented in the West Anchorage Plan, there is a need for small-scale neighborhood serving commercial development in the area. Regarding time when the development probably would occur, historically, this site was a gas station, but it has been vacant for 15 years, and this rezone will bring this underutilized site into a zoning classification that has an economically-viable use. With this rezone, construction is expected to commence in summer 2012. Regarding the effect of the amendment on land uses and residential densities specified in the comprehensive plan, we also find that this standard is met. In the 1982 Comp Plan, it specified 11 to 20 dwelling units per acre. And in the West Anchorage District Plan, it designated 8 to 15 dwelling units per acre. Again, I need to caveat that saying that plan has not yet been adopted by the Assembly. And the conceptionally-proposed site plan includes eight residential units or approximately 20 dwelling units per acre. The Department finds that the requested rezoning of approximately .41 acres from R3 to B1A, we recommend that for approval, subject to the following special limitation, that all development or redevelopment on this site shall be subject to an alternative development design application and administrative site plan review according to 2140140P.
Thank you very much, Ms. Iverson. Are there any questions from the Commissioners to staff? Thank you. Again, the public hearing is now open. May we hear from the petitioner? The petitioner's representative has 10 minutes, and would you please state your name clearly and tell us the amount of time you would like for rebuttal?
Yeah, Madam Commissioner, and, uh, my name's James Brooks. I, I'm probably going to just take about five minutes right now and just save the rest of my time.
Okay.
You know, what I want to start out with is I, I put the project under contract about six months ago, and I immediately created a website to reach out to the community, met with, turning a community council, put together the website mainly to just kind of do messaging and get a sense of what the community wants there. Since then, I got a number of emails sent off the website, which I encouraged, and they've all been positive, none have been negative. First is, just going to give you a couple, I can give you names and addresses where they live. I also live in Turnigan myself. Says, "For the past several years, I've been telling my husband this is exactly what we need in the location," exclamation points. "Glad to hear someone is actually planning to do it. Now you have our full support." "Hi, I love the concept, I love the concept. It seems like it's been a long time coming for Anchorage. I remember popping through Europe and seeing cafes." You know, this guy goes on to say, "I want plenty of bike racks." It's right on the transportation system, and says, "It looks great." Another one, "I'm excited to hear about your planned mixed-use development. Harriet Drummond spoke highly of the project at the last North Star Community Council meeting. I also work at the, at the firm that wrote the West Anchorage District Plan, which indicates a neighborhood mixed-use on Northern Lights." Anyway, I can go on, but we've got, I've got a list of emails here from people in the neighborhood. I get lots of calls from people that are very supportive, they're excited about having a little cafe to go to, they're excited about having it integrated with another product. And I think the city's actually kind of excited about having a small site infill mixed-use development, because nothing else has worked, and nothing else has been viable until this project's come along. So, I think, until I kind of hear what everybody else has, other questions they have, you know, I think I'll step down and let everyone give their opinion.
If you'd just wait just one minute, Commissioner Dean has a question for you.
Through the Chair, could you be more specific about the meetings that you've had with the community, and when you've had the meetings, and what councils you've met with, and approximately how many people attended those meetings?
Well, Kathy Gleason's here from the Turnigan Community Council, I can have her speak. But, at the last, at the meeting, when, um, right now, I'm working with Coladi Brothers Cafe to put in the cafe and, and the bistros, you know, the, uh, concept, conceptually what we're doing right now. When I'm, when I say meetings, I'm talking about meetings that we've had with, with them. The, the people that I meet with are mostly just my neighbors, as I'm out, you know, in the neighborhood going to the Turnigan block party and things like that, and, you know, it's...
But have you met, you have met with the community council, correct?
Yeah. I mean, like, we've, we call her up, talk on a pretty regular basis, and she's met at the site. Within the week that I put the project in the, under contract, both Harriet Drummond and Ernie Hall were at the site, and Kathy Gleason and other members of the community all met me at the site, and I said, "This is what I'd like to do, but, you know, I don't really want to initiate it unless I know I've got support of the community."
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of Commissioners? Okay, thank you. You have eight minutes left for any rebuttal. All right, is there anyone else who would like to testify at this time? Please come forward. If you represent a group, you have five minutes. If you represent an individual yourself, you have three.
Chair, Members of the Commission, my name's Kathy Gleason, I'm President of Turnigan Community Council. And on behalf of Turnigan Community Council, I submit the attached resolution, which hopefully is being handed out to you right now, in support of the Turnigan Crossing Development Proposal, including support for the proposed property of the southwest corner of West Northern Lights and Turnigan Street to be rezoned to B1A Local and Neighborhood Business District. This resolution was passed at our regular September 1st, 2011 TCC meeting. The petitioner representative, James J. Brooks, met with the Turnigan Board last summer. I don't know the exact date, but I think it was June or July of last year. We met on-site, along with our Assembly Representatives, Harry Drummond and Ernie Hall, to discuss the project, and we were all very excited about it. JJ wasn't able to attend our September 1st meeting, but it was on our agenda to pass a resolution, and the owner of Coladi Brothers and another Coladi Brother representative attended that September 1st meeting to further inform the community council on the development proposal. And the attendees, with one exception, this motion passed 10 to 1, were very excited, and they made interesting suggestions, like providing an area for dogs, because they envisioned a lot of people walking their dogs to the site from Turnigan, and also a bike rack, because people envision a lot of people biking to this site within Turnigan. TCC has been very impressed with the open dialogue that has occurred associated with this proposal, and we look forward to continuing to provide input with regard to design, parking, and amenity details. So, on behalf of TCC, I request that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the rezone of the property described in case number 2012-002, so that the developer of Turnigan Crossing can move forward with this project, which TCC feels will be a positive addition to the Turnigan neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Are there any questions from the Commission? Seeing and hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify tonight on the rezone to B1A in case 2012-002? Please come forward.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. Thank you to staff very much for answering all my questions this week. My name is Diane Sheridan, I've lived on West 29th for almost 18 years. I have been a board member of Town West Condos there for all of that time, I'm speaking for myself tonight. I do oppose the rezone of this parcel to B1A for several reasons. This is based on my observations and local knowledge of this corner. I feel that safety is a real issue, and it will have a negative impact on the pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular safety at this intersection and the surrounding streets, in particular, Turnigan Street and West 29th. These are both very narrow streets, we have no sidewalks. We've also seen a very serious pedestrian accident on Turnigan Street involving Harry Crawford's family. West 29th has a lot of children playing on the street and walking to and from the school bus stop. I wholeheartedly support the idea of pedestrian bicycle-friendly business areas, and realize that Turnigan Street will be upgraded in the future. But, at this time, walking or riding in this area poses a considerable risk, and it's irresponsible, I feel, to encourage these activities, especially when you're adding alcohol to the mix. My second point is entering and exiting this, exiting this development. If you go in on Northern Lights, that's fine, if you exit there, you will cause a backup at the traffic light. My biggest concern is turning left out of the development onto Turnigan Street. There's only a very, very short distance there, maybe three car lengths before the light. There's five separate ways you could get hit, and very, very little room to avoid a collision. I think the more likely scenario is that cars will turn right out of there, take another right on West 29th, go speeding down our street, and impact, hopefully, no children. Also, people are going to discover that the only way to cut through between 29th and Northern Lights is to take a shortcut through our condo property, which is midway on 29th. And this passes right by our dumpster, where we also have a very serious problem and expense with non-residents dumping trash. We may be forced to pay for an inconvenience, an expensive fence to block off this shortcut. I also feel that the parking is insufficient. I cannot for the life of me envision 37 parking spots and two buildings on that piece of property, but if you say so, I'll be happy to see it, but I still don't think it's enough, and I wonder where the overflow is going to go. I've been told that they estimate 35 vehicles, and there's high turnover bistro during peak time, they have 25 spots. The residential units have 12 spots, eight units. Our condos have two units per, two spots per unit, and guest parking, we still have people parking on the lawns, on the fire lanes, and on West 29th. I think this is a pilot project, it's never been done before, and I don't think it's the right time for it to be developed in this particular location. And please, don't put dog runs there.
Um, would you stay up just one minute in case any of the Commissioners have a question? Are there any questions from the Commission? So, I have a question. You mentioned alcohol, is there a plan for alcohol, to your knowledge, in this?
Yes, they plan to serve beer and wine.
I'm sorry, what?
According to the information supplied in the packet, they plan to serve beer and wine at the bistro.
And, could I ask staff, what is the distance between the turn onto Turnigan Street and Northern Lights, as I understand it?
It's, it's hard to tell. I have to assume that they'll have the exit on, onto Turnigan Street about where it is right now, and that, that gives you about three car lengths between that location and the light there. And as I said, there are five ways you can get hit right there.
Okay. Any other questions?
And, I would add, this is going to be discussed at the Turnigan, or at our Town West Condo meeting on Thursday. Unfortunately, we didn't have a meeting before this one, so...
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Please come forward at this time.
Good evening to the Board and Madam Chair. My name is Vicki Russell, and I have lived on West 29, at 3,000 West 29th Street for 34 years. In that neighborhood, West 29th is one block south of Northern Lights. I live one halfway between Turnigan Street and Wisconsin. I oppose the proposed resining of, of the .41 acres at the southwest corner of Northern Lights and Turnigan Street intersection from R3 to B1A, thus allowing a restaurant/coffee shop with a beer and wine license to be built there. I agree with all of Ms. Sheridan's testimony, and I... I agree with all of Ms. Sheridan's testimony, and I would like to add that I am here because I believe that facility will dangerously impact those living on West 29th, as well as pedestrians and drivers on West 29th. Because Northern Lights is divided by a median, anyone who wants to go west from this proposed location, west, north, or south, will turn south onto Turnigan Street if they want to go north or west, and probably south, and then they will then turn west on West 29th Street to get to Wisconsin, thus making West 29th Street a through street. West 29th has no sidewalks, and in a winter like this is less than two lanes wide. It is used by Turnigan Elementary School students who walk to school or walk to the school bus stop, which is at my driveway. It is, as it is now, whenever it is impossible to go west on Northern Lights from Turnigan's, the Turnigan Street intersection, I witness vehicles driving instead on West 29th to Town West Condos in order to cut through to their Northern Lights side, or driving to Wisconsin to get to another intersection. Again, many times, those driving to Wisconsin make West 29th a through street and drive over 35 miles per hour. I feel this rezoning will make a dangerous situation even worse, especially when alcohol could be involved. Also, there are already many coffee shops, restaurants, and other facilities on Northern Lights and Benson near Minnesota, which is less than one mile from this proposed site. The former gas station that was built, was there, was built before Northern Lights was divided by a median, and before. The large housing developments west of Arrow and southwest and west of Balto Sepulveda Park greatly increased the population west of the project. There is no parking on Northern Lights allowed, and parking on Turnigan Street is very dangerous. This will lead to excess parking on West 29th, again, increasing the hazardous, hazards for walking and driving. I believe this zoning change causes dangers for those living and walking on West 29th and driving as well, and strongly urge this board to vote no on the zoning change. I would also add that I was one of the people that testified in 2001 against the coffee shop, and the board then decided not to rezone for that.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commissioners to the speaker? Commissioner Wilson?
With respect to the beer and wine piece of this commercial establishment, does that concern you in particular?
Yes, it does.
In what way?
The same people who would be speeding down my street would also have been drinking, perhaps. There could be people out talking, having drunk, and making noise later at night. There could also be pedestrians that had had too much to drink and be walking, and, again, my street, I believe, is very dangerous for that kind of thing.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to testify in this matter?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter, former resident of this part of Anchorage that Mr. Brooks is attempting to develop this in. Lived there for about 17 years. My son's best friend lived, actually, one building south of this location in a multifamily apartment. We rode bikes back and forth down Turnigan all the time to Fish Creek Park, and then up to our house on Cross and Drive. Pretty familiar with the area, and, and I did live there while the gas station was in place as well. And that corner has been identified and utilized as a neighborhood servicing parcel in the past. We've now had kind of a maturing and a generational change. Small, kind of family-run, independent gas stations, even though it was a Standard or Chevron station. It was a small local franchisee who did fix the neighbors' cars and that. We've seen those come and go with time, associated with updates in tank requirements for holding gas and diesel. That site's been looking for another use. I believe that the use that is being proposed is appropriate for that location. I don't believe that it will be a high-traffic generator from the standpoint of the bistro, beer and wine drinking, or even coffee drinking. I think it will be a local draw from the surrounding community, very little outside of the community coming there to make a decision to go, to get a cup of coffee. They'll be intercepted, as the woman indicated, around Benson and Northern Lights and Minnesota. So, it really will be a neighborhood, locally-based area with the trails that have been improved along West Northern Lights and out to the Coastal Trail. I think this will be a popular location, kind of a pearl along a string of trail system, as you can say. That will be the type of improvement that we are looking for, to enhance with mixed uses, to fit the service needs of the local-using public within the neighborhood. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Potter. Does the commission have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who wishes to testify in this matter, case 2012-002? The petitioner has eight minutes.
You know, first of all, as a community, as a resident of the community, safety goes without saying. That is definitely something that I want to make sure that I don't damage by building a project there. The expect, you know, the suggestion that this thing is going to generate traffic beyond what's already there, I think is a little, you know, is probably a little bit misunderstood. The expectation is, is when I looked at the traffic patterns, is I think the high point was around 22 or 23 traffic, I mean, cars within the high point of the day. And during that period of time, we're, you look at the time that that's, that's happening. So, between 4:30 and 5:30 in the evening going west is when you're going to see the high point. We expect that they'll probably filter some of that off, maybe later on in the evening, around 6 o'clock. There is, the expectation is that this would be wine and beer only. It would not be a late night. This isn't looking for a place where people to go out drinking. This is a place where a family could go back, decompress at the end of the day, get to know their neighbors. We're looking for this to be an integrated piece of the community, not something to be, you know, to draw from other parts. So, and, and the concept that this place is going to, that it's not going to be safe when you've got good sidewalks, bike trails across the way, the Turnigan Street improvements are planned to make sure this continues to integrate. What I did with my drawings is a couple of things. First of all, you'll see that there's, I did do a sightline traffic analysis, so you could make sure that cars could see, you know, who was entering the intersection and make sure they're, and it's also a lighted signal, so the people, it is regulated how fast people can go into it. So, I think that's probably wrong to assume that this is going to increase the danger of that intersection. It's already managed, I think, really well. Also, she said, "Not now." I mean, this is perfect time for this. This is when this needs to happen. This is when our town has matured to the point where we've seen Anchorage built, you know, big boxes have come in here and, and wiped out small businesses. This is a place where, where we want to, where we can kind of see exactly what the community needs, a small site, mixed use, where you've got apartments that take up part of the parking, which means that we don't have high-intensity commercial, but we still have adequate commercial to fit what the West Anchorage plan, you know, plan map is. I think that's about all I've got to say, unless someone else, someone's got more questions?
Are there any questions from the commission? Well, I have a question, and maybe it is to staff. So, the balance of the site will, will be developed with a complementary residential component and/or retail office space. So, being a little bit of a wordsmith, I am concerned about the "or." Is it definitive that there will be residential units on this site? Staff?
In my conversations with the applicant, it is intended that there would be a commercial building and a residential building. When we do the site plan review, we will nail down the uses definitively.
So, are you telling me, then, there is the possibility that there might not be eight residential units on this site?
The intent at this time and the concept site plan has eight residential units there at this time.
So, Mr. Brooks, are you committed to eight residential units, and would you consider that to be appropriate for a special limitation?
Sure, I'm happy with that. The reason why I'm doing it, mixed use hasn't been done, hasn't been financed on a small site in this town, right? And the reason I'm looking at it is a couple of different reasons. First, I like the integration of, of having these two uses. The other thing is, is economically, I, what I like about it is, is the market right now supports, you know, construction of residential. It's a stretch for commercial. I'm doing the commercial as, I wouldn't say so much as an experiment, but as a way that I, I see synergies between the uses, and also a nice way for it to blend into the community. So, the residential part is a, is a significant part of my, of my project. You know, the other thing I wanted to say is, is when there were, you know, the residents on 29th Street are concerned about, you know, people driving down 29th Street, I'm not quite sure. I, I have looked at, on Aerials, that street. I never considered it being an impact, but to suggest that cars, that there'll be an increase in traffic in that, I think is an exaggeration. But, and I, I can't imagine what they're saying is that kids would be playing in the streets, is what they're saying the danger is. And I'm, you know, there's plenty of places around, there's a park, actually, to the east of my site, which, you know, clearly would be a night, a better place for kids to be, and there's sidewalks that access it. Anyway, so I'd add on to your response.
Okay. Are there any other questions? No other questions, so I guess I'll continue then. So, this is a 3,000-square-foot cafe and bistro located on two floors. Is that, is that how I understand it?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not aware that Colati Brothers, correct me, if I'm sure you know more about Colati Brothers than I do, that this would be their first venture into beer and wine? Is that correct?
It's not, it'll probably be their first one that they're successful, and they tried doing it downtown when they did their shop in the Performing Arts Center. Al Toon Ball, who also used to run the Glacier Brew House, and I were in Boulder, Colorado recently, touring similar types of blended concepts. We went to probably about five different, you know, coffee shops where in the evening, you know, they still had, you know, they might have had like, you know, a person playing guitar, hanging out, having a glass of wine, and went to a number of bistro. So, Al Too, you know, has the experience of running the Glacier Brew House downtown, so they've got the talent set there, but this will be the first time they actually probably execute. I also spoke with, with other developers in Anchorage. I think that Colati Brothers is also in the ground floor of the JL Tower, and they do some food out of the JL Tower, and so, you know, as part of their business there.
Well, I can tell you, having been at that site, that's very limited food service.
Right, right, right. Well, this is, this is definitely going to be a step up from them. And they're taking, you know, this is going to be a change in their business model.
Okay. And so, there is no plan to have a separate facility on the second floor?
No.
It's just, it's just going to be?
It, I don't think it's going to be 3,000 square feet. I think it'll probably be a little under 3,000 square feet. But, yeah, we're going through the design right now to see how to make that work. We mostly want to try to take advantage of the views that you might have of the mountains from the second floor, for maybe evening dining.
And so, I'm curious, ah, Ms. Iverson, staff?
In the ordinance that was passed for this rezone, to allow this rezone in the alternative development design standards, it would require that 30% of the square footage be developed as residential.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, did you have that? All right, okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Wilson?
Following up on, on the, the concept a little bit more, do you know of any other examples of this kind of a mix of coffee and food and beer and wine, as you describe? Anywhere else in town yet, or would this be a first?
This would be a first. It's probably not the first time I've tried to be a first here in Anchorage. Ms. Yosimura saved me from myself about 20 years ago when I tried turning old warehouses in the industrial area into artists' lofts, and probably might have been ahead of my time then. But I spend part of my year in Boulder right now, and I see this all the time, Lord 48. For instance, you know, a lot of concepts, like even the Moose's Tooth was, you know, taking McMinnamans out of Portland. And that's what we're trying to do now, is I think Anchorage has finally matured to the point where communities are starting to distinguish themselves. And Turnigan's clearly a place where they've, they've shown with the community council support, and, you know, I think with the, with a lot of the responses I've gotten on my website, saying this is perfect for them. You know, they see it, like, one of the guys that sent in, they see it in Europe, they see it in Portland, they see it in Seattle, you'll see it in Boulder.
And your catchment area, are you going, you envision this as more of a, a neighborhood immediately around it, as being the, the market area for your, your business, from what you were saying? Have you thought about the, the draw you'll get from airport traffic? Airport employees that are heading home on, on Northern Lights, or going to work on Northern Lights?
Yeah, no, I, I, you know, I'm hoping that, that we can siphon it off, but the actual parking that we've got designated, for the most that we can fit on the site right now, for 3,000, and I think it's probably going to be more like 27, probably somewhere around 27,000 square feet, so you have 25 spaces. You know, when the owners of Colati Brothers, Tim Gravel and his partner, look at this, they go, you know, hopefully that's enough traffic, enough parking, so that this business is viable. I'm meeting with them on Wednesday to go through it, but, you know, we're hoping that that we can siphon off some of that traffic.
Where would the overflow parking be if you had to have it, if, with limited to 25 on-site?
The, you know, there, there is not, there wouldn't be very limited, I don't think there would be any, any parking that would happen. Right now, what's happening is, is in order to get what I want, you know, in order to get the density that I need on the site to make it work, I've got covered parking beneath the apartments. So, the apartments are accessed, and that's what's interesting, is the traffic for the apartments will come in on the alleyway, nail access there, and then, and so it'll separate the commercial from residential. And I think it's one of the beauties of this site, where I think it would be difficult to replicate in another place in Anchorage, where the commercial is actually, you know, it's a relatively small commercial establishment, is, the parking's independent of the residential. But, you know, there, there could be potentially overflow onto the backside of the residential, because there is extra, extra parking required on that.
It just strikes me that this could be a lot more successful than 25 parking places. And, and so I was just thinking about, you know, what are the, what are your options?
Well, the other thing is, is that I know, you know, I have a-
You could acquire a property nearby, I guess, for parking.
Yeah. Well, there's also that, you know, right now, the Turnigan Street, I've been reading the, if you go to theturniganstreet.com, they'll have, where CRW is doing the study to figure out what to do with from Turnigan, you know, from Northern Lights all the way over to Spinard, and how to make improvements and curb cuts. There's all, there's the Ray's Beauty Salon that's on the other side of the street. There, I believe there's probably capacity to have parking right there next to the park, so that, I mean, if they redo, how they redo Turnigan Street, potentially could absorb some of the overflow parking.
It's an interesting concept.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Brooks.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I do have one question from staff. 30%, is that lot coverage for residence, residential? Or what constitutes the 30%? Combined gross building square footage between the two standalone buildings?
Yes, it says, "For mixed-use development of contiguous areas between 1,200 and 20,000 square feet," which this project is, "inclusive a maximum of," or, excuse me, "a minimum of 30% of the gross building square footage shall be used for residential uses." That's combined of all the square footage on the property.
All the vertical construction?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. In the matter of case 2012-002? In the matter of case 2012-002, I forgot to close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. In the matter of case 2012-002, what is the wish of the commission? Mr. Hickel.
I move to approve this motion.
And it is seconded by Ms. Dean. Mr. Mulkey?
Yes.
Sorry, I keep hitting it, it doesn't stay. All right, so we approve rezoning tonight. Will we see this again when they come with their plan? Is that, who reviews the?
No, I do not believe we would.
Who gets the plan?
It would be an administrative site plan review. And if you refer to the special limitations on page 11, "All development or redevelopment on this site shall be subject to an alternative development design application and administrative site plan review."
Mistress, so staff would?
Yes.
Get the funding.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. And, Mr. Hickel, would you mind including this special limitation in your motion?
I have no objection.
All right, thank you. Ms. Dean?
I agree.
All right. Are there any findings of fact in support of this motion?
Yes, I'd like to have a couple if I could, please. This is in the matter of 2012-002, the request for rezoning approximately 0.41 acres. Fact, finding of fact would be, it has been formulated in the comprehensive plan. It also has the new ordinance, which is 2011-93S, which allows a mixed use in our city with some restrictions as they are mentioned in the ordinance. It also has the effect of the zoning map and amendments. It also has the public facilities required, utilities, and those miscellaneous things. And it also has the land use pattern and transportation that is required under the comprehensive plan. Also meets the West Anchorage Plan has been proposed to the Assembly.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mulkey, do you have anything else you'd like to add? You're still in the queue.
Yeah, just still in the queue, just quit the queue.
All right, all right, thank you very much. Is there any objection to the motion for approval? Seeing and hearing none, this rezone is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Moving on to case 2012-004, the petitioners municipal light and power, zoning conditional use for a power station. Do we have any, anyone representing the municipal light and power?
I want to do staff first.
Do we have staff, or, Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On December 19th, 96 public hearing notices were mailed out for this item. We did not receive any comments back from the public nor from the community council. This is a conditional use to allow expansion of an existing electrical power station on PLI property on the Glen Highway. This is a large building, a large piece of land, it's a large project, but if you take it apart and look at the pieces, it's really not much more than an expansion of an existing facility. So, as such, it need, only need the basic qualifications for conditional use. On page three of the property is an aerial photograph, excuse me, and if you take a look at that photo, you can see the petition site is labeled, it is currently naturally vegetated, and it is located between two existing switching stations belonging to ML&amp;P. On page four is the site plan for the property showing you the new building, some associated cooling towers, and a few other associated facilities that will go along with the new station. There are also some graphics supplied by the applicant on pages 43, 44, and 45, which give a good rendition of what the facility will look like in relation to the other buildings once it is constructed. The only thing I would add to those three simulations is that there will be additional vegetation in front of the prop, in front of the building along the Glen Highway. The applicant will have to meet the highway screening requirement of the code. The property where the new plant's going to be built, as I mentioned, is currently treed, natural vegetation. There is a hill on the property approximately 45 feet tall. That material will need to be removed. The land needs to be leveled for the new plant. There is a municipal fill-in grade permit required for that. There are no streams or wetlands in any area on the property. Short-term snow storage will be identified on the site plan. Snow storage is anticipated at the east and west ends of the property. The existing power plant has been in existence since 1975. It is wearing out, and it needs to be replaced with new, modern, more efficient equipment, and this equipment will be cleaner, quieter, safer, and cheaper to run than the existing plant. No new employees are going to be added to the project. There are 14 currently. The property is to be fenced and gated with all access to Centennial Road. The public is not allowed onto the property unless accompanied by an employee. And after construction, the highway screening, landscaping, and fence will need to be replaced along the Glen Highway frontage. Once the new plant is in operation, the existing facility will not be used for power generation except during periods of maintenance or periods of increased demand when it's absolutely necessary to bring it back online. The construction schedule, if all goes as planned, is for clearing to begin this spring. Additional site preparation will continue throughout the year, and then construction would begin in 2013 and be completed in 2015. The basic standards for a conditional use require that the project be consistent with the comprehensive plan. This proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Anchorage 2020 does not have a specific designation for this property, but both the 1982 comprehensive plan and the 2000 concept plan map adopted by the planning commission indicate PLI uses, which includes electrical generating facilities for this property. This property is currently used by AWWU and ML&amp;P, and the proposal is consistent with at least 10 comprehensive plan policies. Those are identified on page six. So, the department believes that this proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The project will conform to all title, all regulations of this title, namely the PLI zoning district, which is 2140-020, the highway screening easement section of the code, 2145-130, and of course, the conditional use standards under 2150. The project is compatible with the existing and planned land uses in the area. It is bounded on the, excuse me, it is bounded on the east, west, and south by existing AWWU or MLP facilities and several acres of natural vegetation before you get to any residential development. The project will not have a greater impact on the items listed under the standards than what would be anticipated from permitted development. One, pedestrian and vehicle circulation and safety. Again, the site is not open to the public. It is completely fenced and gated. All visitors must be escorted. There is no expected change to traffic generation as a result of the new plant. The demand for and availability of public services and facilities, there's no change in the staffing of the site, so there are no extra demands at the site. In fact, the site will be producing power for downtown, midtown, the port, Ship Creek, and Joint Base Elmandorf-Richardson. Noise, air, water, and other forms of environmental pollution. This is a new plant powered by natural gas. It will have fewer air admissions, lower maintenance costs, and be less noisy than the existing facility. And for the extent of any noise being generated, for all purposes, that occurs within a completely enclosed building. Water, surface water issues, final drainage analysis and plans will be required at building permit time. The property's not in a flood plain. The seismic zone is Zone 2, which is moderately low susceptibility for ground failure. Property is not in an avalanche area. It is not in a wind hazard zone, and the air quality will be improved once the old plant is shut down and the new plant comes online. The department recommends approval. There are a few conditions on pages eight and nine. Thank you.
Through the chair, my question for staff is on page nine, the schedule of construction. Was that decided by the planning department, or was that decided by the property owner?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dean, that's straight from the utility.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Commissioner Wilson?
What is the, see, we don't have any, I wasn't focusing on everything you said there. I may have missed it. The city, the community council in the area didn't have any comments?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wilson, the community council did not respond to the mailing.
Okay. And it's quite a ways from residential area.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wilson, I actually do have a number taken from the application. I'll ask the applicant to confirm that, but I believe the closest residential is more than half a mile of an area that will remain naturally vegetated.
Yeah. Okay. I'll have other questions for the applicant, too. Thanks.
Are there any other questions from staff? All right, let's hear from the applicant. Please come forward. Thank you. Please clearly state your name for the record and tell us how much time you'd like for rebuttal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Wendy Wilbur, and I am with CRW Engineering representing ML&amp;P, and I would like approximately five minutes for rebuttal. Depends how long I go. So, we're here tonight. I think it's a great project. I do want to start with the Northeast Community Council. We went to visit them on November 17th, and they have been watching this project for a long time and have been very concerned because originally ML&amp;P was looking at expanding into Centennial Park, and the Northeast Community Council was opposed to that. And in response, ML&amp;P reevaluated what could be done on-site and are looking at infilling between the two switch yards and not really expanding their footprint but taking advantage of existing infrastructure. And at that November 17th meeting, the Northeast Community Council did pass a resolution in support of this project, and I'm honored to say that rarely do I present to a community council, but when we showed them this, they all stood up and cheered. So, they're very relieved to see that it is not going into Centennial Park. ML&amp;P is fairly constrained because they have Centennial Park on one side, they have military land on the other side, and behind them you have the AWWU facility. Power plant is not an easy thing to cite under the best of circumstances, and so we do have an existing use. It's been here since 1975. The existing facility is grandfathered in, and so this site will just, this expansion will just infill their existing site. I think it's the best of all worlds. So, why are they expanding? Well, 1975, these generators, as I call them, they call them turbines, but just depends if you're a power expert or not, are more than 30 years old. The life, the average life of these turbines is 30 years. Some of these are older than when EPA came up with their air quality requirements, so they're tired. ML&amp;P has a mission to provide reliable power. When people turn on their switch, they have 34,500 customers. When people flip their light switch, they expect those lights to go on. So, ML&amp;P is simply upgrading and modernizing their existing equipment. So, what are the benefits to this? It really is a community-wide benefit. 11% reduction in natural gas just with this new turbine coming online. You have 97% less nitrogen dioxide, 80% less carbon dioxide. That's 125,000 vehicles off the road when this new turbine comes online. And overall, the state's emissions from power generation go down 7%. So, today, when you look at the turbines, you only get 33% efficiency. What you see is that big plume coming out. Everyone knows the plume. That's 66% of waste heat lost. The new power plant is 70% efficient. Now, somebody at the community council said, wait, that's only a C. Well, industry standard is really about 50% efficient for these state-of-the-art turbines. What's great about this project is we can be 70% efficient. It makes it one of the most energy-efficient generation facilities in the U.S. And the reason for that is the waste heat is going to be captured with AWWU. It's going to heat that AWWU water. So, this co-location of facilities is creating this tremendous benefit, making this a state-of-the-art power generation plant. And it gets better, frankly, because when your water's warmer and it comes to your house, the end user actually uses a little bit less natural gas to heat that water up. So, the benefits are quite significant of really just modernizing and bringing up the standards. We certainly comply with all of the comprehensive plan and Title 21 requirements for this project. It's a public interest to have good, cost-effective energy. It's good to have your lights come on. It's a compatible land use. We do meet the screening easement. And as you can see in this photo simulation, it really helps you to understand what the new building will look like. It's got a little more neutral color, a little more style, I think. We'll have a nice rock-faced gabion and wood fence in front of the plant with the Title 21 highway landscaping. So, with that, I will save the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Are there any questions? Mr. Parks?
On your site plan, existing site plan, I noticed that there's some fuel storage. Will they be, continue to be on-site, or will they be removed, or is there a plan with that?
The existing fuel storage will stay on-site.
I'm sorry?
It will stay on-site. The existing portion of the ML&amp;P facility really isn't changing very much.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
The existing plants, turbines that are going to be replaced, or that power is going to be replaced by the new facilities, how many turbines will be built, first of all?
With conditional use, it's looking at putting in one turbine, but the actual building that you're looking at and what we're asking for is the future to expand to two turbines.
Okay, and how many megawatts are you talking?
They are 30 megawatts, 65.
Total? Okay. And what's your cost per megawatt?
I'm going to ask Eugene Ory from ML&amp;P to come up for cost per megawatt.
Through the chair, Eugene Ory, ML&amp;P. We are just shy of $2,200 a kilowatt installed, which is very close to the SPP power project that is currently under construction.
And will the turbines that will be, will the old turbines be phased out and replaced, and removed, or will they be always used as backup, or what?
At this time, they'll remain in place for backup.
So you have access to gas. I know you own some gas fields, but that may not be sufficient to completely power you. You have access to plenty of gas.
Well, remember, this new turbine is much more efficient, so we're going to be using less natural gas, so we've already got the gas there.
You already have the gas?
Yes.
For how long?
I think that what's important is to focus on MLNP as a responsibility now to their ratepayers to continue to provide reliable electricity. So they, what they have done is they have done an integrated resource management plan that their board adopted in 2009. And that looks at immediate needs, and it looks at long-term needs, and it looks at alternative. So they do have a full plan, but they've got to keep the lights on now.
Okay.
Mr. Mulkey?
Yeah, hi, thanks. I see some information on the air quality. It looks like you're moving forward to get all that approved. One of the things that we found out, I think, up in Fairbanks is that the main system meets all the air quality, but you had that second system. So in this case, this would be the existing plant. The new plant would meet all the qualities. The existing plant would sit there, not in use, and then be fired up occasionally for maintenance and then in surge periods. In Fairbanks, they found that during those fire-ups, when you first fire up the plant, all the accumulated gook gets in the pipes, it gets blown into the air, and they exceed their air quality during those periods. So I just want to make sure that you have that in consideration as you pursue your air quality.
Thank you, Mr. Mulkey. Are there any other questions? I have a couple of questions. Is that a 30-foot screening easement as required by DOT or what's?
That is a 20-foot screening easement. You can do, under Title 21, you're permitted to do a 20-foot screening easement if you use a decorative fence. So we have a decorative fence, and then we have 20 feet in front of that. That is going to be vegetated in accordance with the screening easement. Now, the older plant is grandfathered in, and you will notice that if you looked at your site plan, the DOT right-of-way in many cases abuts the building. It was built in 1975 before we had all these regulations. So the easement, the screening easement that you see in front of the existing plant varies between about 16 feet up to 35 feet, but some of that is planted in ADOT right-of-way. Because of existing underground transmission lines and facilities, there is nothing that can really be done with that.
Mr. Wilson, if you'll hold that thought. Mr. Barrett, is that, is that the way the screening easement is supposed to work or is this an unusual arrangement or what's the situation there?
Madam Chair, Ms. Wilber's explanation is correct. The existing buildings are grandfathered, and for the new building, it can either be 30 feet of screening easement or 20 feet with a seven-foot fence. And they've chosen the fence, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Wilson?
The plume you mentioned is, will be greatly reduced, if not, will it be eliminated?
It's essentially eliminated.
With the two, the one new turbine will be?
So there are two cooling towers.
Mm-hmm.
So there will be two new cooling towers that sit adjacent to the building. So the older cooling tower, again, will only be operated very rarely, just in case of, you know, when they pull the old plant online in case of emergencies. And with the newer technology, you just won't see those steam plumes. I'm sure people will be lost on their way into Anchorage, but.
What are the Ravens going to do?
I know. They're really, we should have had a complaint from them. So the Ravens will have to relocate.
Oh, gee.
Any other comments? I have one last question. What's the rate increase projected for, to pay for this new facility?
I will pass that on to Eugene.
Madam Chair, we are looking at a series of rate increases over the next four years, starting with a 4% rate increase in support of the project. But that will more than be offset by the efficiency gains in the natural gas that is not used to produce the same amount of power. So it's a very good project.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? You have some time for, well, I'm sorry, open the public hearing. It's getting late, getting tired. All right, so the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here who wishes to testify in regards to case 2012-004? Seeing and hearing no one, the petitioner's representative has an additional five minutes.
It's getting late. I don't think I have a rebuttal tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's greatly appreciated in the matter of 2012-004. We have a motion, close the public hearing. Now we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to approve and a second by Terry Parks.
I'm moved to approve.
Okay, and with conditions?
With conditions.
Okay. And Mr. Parks, are you in agreement with that, those conditions?
I am, and I would like to put some findings in if I could, please.
All right, please go ahead.
Well, I certainly applaud MLNP for thinking into the future and providing this before we lose power. I own some property on that side of town. It'd be very nice to have our lights in our commercial building. And I'm also excited about the standpoint of having backup power in that neighborhood too, into the future. And the findings are as that this meets the comprehensive development plan and conforms to the comprehensive development plan in the manner required by Chapter 2105. It will be compatible with existing and planned uses in the area and the surrounding neighborhoods. It doesn't impact anything negatively. It meets all the standard of the pedestrian and vehicular traffic circulation and safety and the demand for available and public surfaces facilities. Also meets the noise and air and water and other forms of environmental pollution.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or findings of fact?
Just one addition. The, it's clear from the presentation and the materials that the applicant has done the very best to maximize efficiency and reduce the impact on ratepayers, which everybody appreciates. And the heating of our water supply is certainly an innovation that should be remarked, should be congratulated. Thanks.
Thank you very much for those comments, Mr. Wilson, and Mr. Parks, for those findings of fact. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that is approved. Thank you very much. Congratulations. We look forward to seeing that construction. Moving on to case 2012-008, the petitioner is Walgreens. The request is a site plan review for a large retail development. May we hear from staff, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This public hearing notices were sent out on December 19th, 2011. Seventy-four public hearing notices were mailed as of this writing and as of this moment. No comments in support of or opposition to the development have been, were received. The petitioner's representative did make a presentation to the Spinnard Community Council. The community council did not provide written comments. However, staff did receive a verbal report that the council supports the proposal, finding that it replaces some of the services that were lost with the closing of Hewitt's Drugstore and Safeway in the Northern Lights Mall. In addition, the addition of Walgreens was seen as a positive asset and a valuable asset to the community. This property is located on the south side of West Northern Lights Boulevard, east of Minnesota Drive, and north of West Benson Boulevard and West 29th Avenue. The site is Zone B3. It consists of one 5.41-acre site. As mentioned, it's developed with the Northern Lights Mall. This mall does date to the mid-'60s, and it is subject to AMC 2150-320, 2155-130 as well, which is the non-conforming section of Title 21. Vehicular access to the Northern Lights Mall is from West Northern Lights Boulevard on the north, Minnesota Drive on the west, Spinnard Road on the east, and West 29th Avenue via Benson Boulevard on the south. The proposal is to construct a pharmacy retail store that is approximately 15,000 square feet at the southwest corner of the Northern Lights Mall. The location of the proposed Walgreens is currently occupied by the Johnson Tire Store, which is proposed to be demolished. And that demolition is proposed to commence in spring of this year, with construction to begin shortly thereafter and completion by late fall 2012. Once Walgreens has constructed the building, the ownership of the building will revert to the owners of the mall, and Walgreens will in turn lease the building back from the mall owners. This does conform with the comprehensive plan. Anchorage 2020 identifies this area as a town center, and development of the Walgreens conforms to the intent of town centers, providing a needed facility for the neighborhood. Basically, under 2155, which is a non-conforming section, this, this development has existed, as mentioned, since the mid-'60s. It is not deemed a non-conforming use, but it is deemed an approved site plan as it exists today. Therefore, under 2155, 10% of the proposed improvements must be dedicated to improvements of the, a number of items. After adoption of the Large Retail Establishment Ordinance, the Director of Community Planning did establish a policy whereby that 10% requirement would be improvements to existing facilities in the following areas. One, and it's listed in the order of importance. One is vehicular and pedestrian safety improvements, blending of the exterior of the old facility and the new facility, and landscaping and drainage improvements. Generally, the proposed improvements do conform that $350,000 are planned for exterior improvements such as landscaping, pedestrian improvements, as well as northern design. The total cost of the building is $2.5 million approximately, with $250,000 required to meet that 10%, and they are exceeding the 10% requirement. The petition site does have a long history. The Northern Lights Mall was constructed in the 1960s. It was constructed prior to a number of current regulations. Number one is buffer landscaping between commercial areas, commercial development, and residential zoning districts. There are no residential zoning districts that adjoin this property. It predates parking lot landscaping. It even predates the requirements for commercial establishments to even go through a site plan or a conditional use. And it does predate public hearing site plan review for large retail establishments. However, the proposed development will bring the design, the design of the proposed development will bring the site as a whole into greater compliance with the standards set forth in AMC 2150-320, which are the large retail establishment standards in terms of landscaping, aesthetics, pedestrian connectivity, loading facilities, lighting, and signage. In reviewing the standards of AMC 2150-320, those standards appear to generally be met. The development will improve access to the West Northern Lights Mall by eliminating one driveway onto Minnesota Drive and relocating a driveway access on, to West Northern Lights, further away from the intersection for traffic safety. At this location, Minnesota Drive, Benson Boulevard, and Northern Lights are state-owned and maintained rights of way, driveway permits will have to be obtained from ADOT. Access to the loading facilities on the south side of the building will be from West 29th Avenue, which is an improvement. It would, due to the length of the delivery trucks, turning maneuvers could not safely be made from West Northern Lights Boulevard or Minnesota. From West 29th Avenue, which is a frontage road for Benson Boulevard, they are more able to meet those turning gradient. In terms of the traffic impacts, the State of Alaska, DOTPuff, has determined that the difference between the existing development and the new proposed development would not have a significant impact. This is a signalized intersection at West Northern Lights in Minnesota, and they did not require traffic impact analysis. But they do urge the applicant to submit driveway applications for as soon as possible because if there are any changes to the site plan, it's better to know them more quickly than later. And so the TIA was not required. In terms of drainage, there is a storm drain system in both Minnesota Drive and Northern Lights. There are onsite catch basins that tie into that drainage system. As mentioned, in terms of visual and noise buffers, there are no residentially zoned properties adjoining this petition site. There is no proposed outdoor storage, and so that standard is, won't be applicable. Trash will be collected from the south side of the building, and it will, the trash receptacle will be screened. It will be screened in materials that are similar to the building materials used on the main Walgreens store. In terms of snow storage and removal, snow will be plowed and it will be removed from the site, and that is part of the lease agreement that Walgreens has with the owners of the They are providing excess parking, and that is required. They're required to have 49 spaces. They're providing 61. That is to the advantage of the mall as a whole. It will make more parking space available for other uses within the mall. There are pedestrian amenities that are being proposed. There are existing sidewalks along Minnesota Drive and Northern Lights Boulevard. There are sidewalk improvements along with a snow belt system that is proposed along the sidewalk at, along Minnesota Drive. There are three bus routes that serve this area, and Bus Route 36 does stop adjacent to this particular site, and they will, it will be readily available to, for pedestrians to reach that bus route. The walkway connections from Northern Lights Boulevard and Minnesota Drive to the rest of the retail development will be provided. The building entry is aligned with the Alaska Club, with the pedestrian connection directly to the Alaska Club and the rest of the mall area. The landscaping plan does generally meet the AMC 2145-125, with the exception of two additional trees are needed to meet the visual enhancement landscaping standards, and that is addressed by a condition of approval. There are community spaces, both provided. There is a covered walkway at the entrance to the Walgreens store, as well as there are community spaces in the mall proper. Delivery and loading will be at the rear of the building. Again, it will be screened. Exterior signs will need to meet the, well, the exterior signs. Exterior signs will need to meet the, well, the exterior signs, was verified with Walgreens that their exterior signs are trademarked. Therefore, they are exempt from the sign code. However, they are, will, they will, the petitioner is going to work with the planning department regarding the lighting of those signs to try to reduce some of the night glow. The outdoor lighting will have to meet the lighting zone three, and the applicant has been working and will continue to work with the planning division to ensure that it does meet the standards and does not exceed the standards of lighting zone three. The aesthetic characteristics are of particular interest in that the intent is to blend in with the mall and the existing mall, and what the design elements did was to try to incorporate design elements of the REI store. That is on the eastern side of the mall, and this store will be on the western side. These then become aesthetically two anchor stores with similar design elements in terms of materials and colors, color scheme, using corrugated metal, cedar columns to have an Alaskan feel to the store as well, at the entry level, entry to the store as well. The entryways are designed to be oriented to customers, and the building entry and pharmacy will be identified and identified with corrugated metal siding similar to the REI. So there is a similarity in the aesthetic design that was proposed for the Walgreens that basically ties it into the Northern Lights Mall as a whole. And basically, there were, through conversations as a result of questions from Chair Yoshimura, there are, there is an amended recommendation that was placed on the table tonight. There are minor additions, but it's, but it was printed out, and hopefully you have it. But there are now eight conditions that are recommended. An eighth condition was recommended in terms of question, responding to questions from Chair Yoshimura, that requires entering into a shared access agreement with Land Use Review. Community Development Department to be recorded with the State District Recorder's Office. This will ensure access to the Walgreens store through two lots that are owned by the owners of the mall, but it will ensure access in perpetuity because lots can be sold to other owners. It's a possibility. So that condition does, was added. Condition six was amended to state if an amendment to the site plan is required by DOT as a result of approving the driveway permits, a revised site plan shall be submitted to the Planning Division Community Development Department for review and approval, because it is anticipated that any change would really rather be minor, and a pretty comprehensive site plan has been provided to the commission with this application, especially the design elements that have been incorporated. And the fifth condition was amended in that there was an error in the stack report in interpreting the landscape plan. So condition five was restated to amend the landscape plan to add two additional trees, one in the westernmost planting island of the parking area, and one in the landscape island at the eastern edge of the parking area. So in all, the changes are noted in bold on the amended recommendation with those Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Ms. Dean, you have a question?
Through the chair. My question is, normally on site plan reviews, it's got to be a building of 40,000 square feet or more, and this building is only 15,000 square feet. Could you let me know why we're seeing this plan?
Madam Chair, Ms. Dean, that's true. It is only 15,000 square feet, but the mall as a whole has greater than 40,000 square feet. So this was deemed a limited site plan review, because the total square footage, building square footage within the West Northern Lights, within the Northern Lights Mall exceeds 40,000 square feet.
I have one more question.
Yes.
I've noticed there's an extra driveway being added on the southwest corner of the property. Has there been an application and approval from DOT for that driveway permit?
Madam Chair, driveway permits have not, anytime you have a change of use, even if you're not moving a driveway, you have to reapply for those driveway permits. The driveway permits applications have not been submitted to DOT. The DOT does recommend that they be submitted so they can be reviewed in the event that there are any minor changes to this site plan, that the site plan can be amended to incorporate any changes that may occur as a result of the driveway permit approval.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? So following up on a question with Ms. Dean, is it a standard procedure to review these site plans prior to the submission of approval for the driveway access, prior to our approval or after our approval, or what's the standard procedure, so to speak?
Madam Chair, in reviewing prior large retail establishment case reports, I have frequently, I have seen a condition on numbers of those reports to obtain driveway approval from the State of Alaska. And so that seems to have been an acceptable way of reviewing the driveway permits. There's nothing to prevent some applicant to apply for those driveway permits. However, I understand that the petitioner's representative have been working with state DOT throughout the process and the development of this site plan for your review.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right. Seeing and hearing no more questions from staff, may we have the petitioner's representative come forward, please? You have 10 minutes for your presentation. Is there amount of time that you would like to have for rebuttal?
I'd like to reserve six minutes.
Right. Thank you very much. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Michelle Ritter. I'm with IHKM. With me this evening is Tanya Hickock, a civil engineer with IHKM, and also Amy Chalak, representative from Walgreens. As Ms. Dean pointed out, this, the square footage for the Walgreens does fall under the 20,000 threshold for a site plan review, but it is on the same parcel as the existing mall, and so therefore it's looking, being looked at as one development. The site plan, Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. O'Brien went through that the site plan, limited site plan review does look at landscaping, pedestrian, and vehicular safety improvements, as well as blending with the old exterior and the new exterior. Walgreens development is going to be about three, I'm sorry, yeah, 2.4 million, and the proposed improvements are going to be about 350,000, which is almost 14%. So it does exceed the required 10% improvements. These improvements do include removing one driveway from Minnesota, and we're not installing a new driveway, but rather we're relocating the driveway that you mentioned in the southwest corner, as well as relocating a driveway on Northern Lights Boulevard, both as mitigation to eliminate or create safer ingress and egress. We'll be improving vehicular and pedestrian circulation by straightening the parking stalls, as well as providing better striping throughout the site, and low-lying bollards that will be lighted to help both pedestrians and vehicular traffic maneuver the site. There will be a snowmelt system along the eastern and northern sidewalks adjacent to the building. As well, there's going to be improved materials for the building. As Ms. O'Brien stated, there will be cedar columns, glazing of the windows, better articulation that's going to tie in with REI, creating that blend between the old and the new, and kind of creating a guideline for any future infill improvements. We typically do have the site plan approved prior to going to DOT for the driveway permit approval. We do that so that if there's any changes required by the commission, that those are all incorporated prior to going to DOT, so that they kind of get the final site plan. Overall, the new development and associated improvements bring the entire site more into compliance, and it also brings a retail opportunity that once existed in this mall. There used to be a Hewitt Drugs, as well as a Safeway store that both provided retail pharmaceutical opportunities. We did attend the November Spinnard Community Council. As stated, we do not have anything in writing, however, there was no objections by the community. We'd like to thank Ms. O'Brien for all of her time and help on this project, and I'd like to save the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the petitioner's representative? Michelle, if you could please come forward. We do have a question from Commissioner Parks.
Just have a couple of quick questions. First of all, it says under, on page 11H, it says snow removal. It's requirement of the landlord to remove the snow. Is that correct? And you guys agree with that?
Correct.
And you're going to remove it after every snowfall?
Within 72 hours is required by code.
Doesn't say that in here. That's the reason I asked the question. That's what I assumed. And then the other, the other question I have, I don't think I've seen this in any, any of these, and I don't know why it was brought out, and it says Walgreens will own the building during construction. That leads me to believe that after construction, they won't own the building.
Correct. As Ms. O'Brien stated, the ownership of the building will go back to the underlying landowner, who is the mushin', and Walgreens will lease the building from them, from the mushin'.
How do you, how do you take title to a piece of property that's a part of a larger parcel? I guess I'm confused.
I believe that Amy Chalak can probably discuss the intricacies of that better, but Walgreens will not be taking title. They're just going to basically be funding the development of the building.
That's not what it says. It says they will own the building. Doesn't say they're a funding source for the building. I guess I'm concerned. I, that, that sounds odd to me.
Okay.
In a commercial tract.
Hi, I'm Amy Chalak. I'm with Walgreens. We can provide documentation of the agreement that we have with our landlord, but it's in our lease. The intention is to comply with that in that we are funding it, we are paying it, but the title is going to the owner, and we will be leasing it. And we have a representative from the landlord as well who can speak to that.
I guess I'm really confused on how that works.
Well, at the long-term lease, so as far as Walgreens is concerned, it doesn't matter whether we own it or lease it. We have the building for our use, so it was an executive call to make to say we will be not holding ownership of this building. It's unusual for Walgreens to do it that way, but it was an unusual circumstance to deal with, and we were able to work through the legalities of it with the landlord.
Effectively, Mr. Parks, I under, you know, I know that you understand commercial property, and you have a larger parcel that has a big box on it. Effectively, what they're doing, if you can, if you can look at it this way, the owners of the property in the mall are allowing Walgreens to come in on their property, build a building, and then they will then, so basically they're the financial entity, and building a building to meet their needs, and then they'll give them title, and they will lease that building from the owners of the mall. The owner of the building will actually be the mall property. They're basically almost a developer that's building the building. They just get the accommodation of leasing it long-term.
Isn't that typically done with a ground lease, with the right to build and, and to, to give title to them when they've completed building? Is that what they've done? Because it's, they don't own the land. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Walgreens won't be, won't own the land, and typically in a mall like yours, if you have an parcel that's not really a parcel, it's part of the mall property.
Right.
Effectively, you can't lease or sell land without it being platted.
Exactly.
So effectively, if, if, if they were going to, they couldn't lease the land. Walgreens couldn't. But if, in fact, the owner built the building, they could lease the building, and they would probably get a permit or a license for a certain number of parking spaces as part of the, part of the lease agreement.
Exactly. So I guess.
We're basically getting to the same point. It's just that, say that the owners of the property don't have to go to the bank, Walgreens is acting as the bank, they're providing the design, they're going to build the building, and they're going to lease that building long-term. And they'll use the value of the building against what their future lease is going to be.
I understand the concept, but how do you protect the city that the building is completed when they're not the owners of the property? I guess that's the point that I'm trying to make. Generally, the permit is pulled by the person who has the legal rights to the property. How are they going to attain that when they don't have a land lease or they don't own the track that they're building on?
Because they'll have a separate contract with the owners of the property that have a requirement that they perform. And when they, when Walgreens goes and gets the permit to build the building, they are obligated to build the building to the owners.
First time I've ever.
It may be, it may be a little bit different, but it does work.
Okay, that's fine.
Ms. Dean, but if I can just follow up with Mr. Parks for one minute, from, with Mr. Parks for one minute. Who has the general liability for the construction of the building?
That would be Walgreens.
Ms. Dean.
Through the chair. I noticed there's a loading dock area in the back. It's nonspecific. I haven't seen any pictures, like you back a truck up into a loading bay, or is it just parallel parked a truck, and then it's unloaded with a forklift? And then where will trucks be parked where they're loading and unloading, and if they're just sitting, waiting to be unloaded?
To answer your first question, the trucks will parallel in and unload with a forklift. There's going to be about one to two deliveries per week, and so there, there would only be one delivery truck on-site, probably during the hours that their, that the store is opened, so they won't be sitting there waiting. They'll just be able to pull into the loading area, unload, and then leave.
So then my question is, does Walgreens have their own truck that they bring up then, or do you know how they're going to be dealing with their? The reason why I'm asking this is we've run into this with various stores, retail, that seem to run out of places to store things, so they use their trucks in their lot as storage devices, and then we end up with a bunch of trucks sitting in the lot.
That is, that is not the intent of how loading will occur here. They will, from my understanding, they will not have their own truck, but they will be using a trucking company who will get the goods from the port and then bring the items to the store.
Are there additional questions?
Well, I have a question on the site plan. On the west side of the Alaska Club, there currently are parking spaces, and it would appear by looking at the site plan that those parking spaces are now going to go away. Is that correct?
That is correct, and they will be replaced with parking spaces closer to the Walgreens development, and then there will be some remaining. I'm going to step away. So there's still be parking in the back, and then some parking is here that has been used by the Alaska Club.
So I've lost my parking space?
You'll have a little extra time to warm up before you get to the gym.
Thank you. Thank you. I find it a little difficult. I guess I can't disagree with policy that's been established at this particular point in time by the planning director, so I will have to address that issue separately. But I find some of the included improvements, as an offset to the 10%, that these items would be necessary anyway for the general connectivity and the moving of the curb and that sort of thing, the aprons at the entrance, the loading area pad. I really, you know, I have to just go on the record and say, I don't consider those items to be applicable to the 10% for central improvements. But I guess I will have to deal with that as a policy issue. But we've had that issue before. I do appreciate the aesthetic improvements. I do like the anchoring with REI. This is a better Walgreens-looking building than what we've seen in the past. I'm not satisfied with the amount of landscaping or how this landscaping will be maintained on a long-term basis. I think this particular area of town could do with a considerable increase in landscaping enhancements. And so I find that disappointing, but again, I will address those issues as a policy matter at a later time. Does anyone else have any questions of the petitioner's representative?
Seeing and hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. What? Oh. Well, there's no one here. Oh, Kathy, please come.
Well, only because I'm...
Oh, dear.
It's okay, I'll be quick.
It's late. It's time.
It's getting late.
All right.
Chair and members of the commission, I'm Kathy Gleason. I'm speaking for myself. This is not an attorney-in-community council boundary, although I happened to attend the November Spinnard Community Council meeting, and I would have to concur, no one had any major negative comments with regard to this proposal. But I did just kind of zoom in on the landscaping part of this design, and I have to totally concur with you, Commissioner, that I would like to see much more landscaping. And I hope that the commission adds as a requirement, a condition, to your approval of the site plan, if you choose to do so, to abide by AMC 2145-125C4E that says hedges should be one-third evergreen plant to two-thirds deciduous. I didn't see any evergreens proposed in this landscaping plan at all, based on, if I can read the fine print on page 83 in this packet. And I think that's really, that's been a pet peeve of mine for a long time, especially in the winter. We need color, we need texture, we don't need things poking out looking like little twigs for the first 20 years of a site plan planting. So I would really encourage ways to find areas to put more evergreen shrubs and trees in the site plan, if you guys want to focus in on that, and that there is a requirement that they add at least two more trees as per code. And so I really appreciate your focus on that. But I did notice, it looks like a mid, between intersections pedestrian crossing from Minnesota, and I don't know if I'm looking at that correctly or not, on the west side of the site plan. And with Johnson Tires there now, we happen to have used that facility for 29 and a half years. I hate to see it go, but I am glad to see Walgreens coming into the area. I've seen so many people run across from the cars Aurora Village mid-intersection and go to, over to Johnson's and then beyond. And I'm wondering if this will just even encourage more of that, since you're allowing this, what looks like a pedestrian, inviting pedestrians to cross into the site right there between the intersections of Benson and Northern Lights. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify during the public hearing? Seeing and hearing none, this public... What? Do you have a rebuttal? Okay.
I just wanted to just refer back to the memo that we prepared for the planning department that discusses the requirements of 2145-125. And I do want to preface this statement with, we understand everyone's concern for landscaping, but do just want to hit on that we do meet the requirements of 2145-125C1B and C, and that the condition, I'm sorry, the code does read, as Ms. Gleason stated, that the evergreen should have a minimum ratio of five feet in height with a ratio of height to spread no less than five to three, or deciduous trees, a minimum of eight feet in height, one-inch caliper, planted at average intervals of greater than 20 feet uncentered. And we do have two-inch caliper trees, and our shrubs do meet, install are higher in height than required. Just wanted to get that on the record. And then also, the area that Ms. Gleason was referring to is a people removal bus stop, and so it's not something we've created, it's something that's there as part of the people mover transit. And just wanted to thank you guys for your time and consideration.
Mr. Wilson?
I wonder if I could ask you a question. On behalf of the applicant, could you commit to doing some evergreens?
I'd like to defer to the... Yes.
How many? How tall?
We do have, along the southern property line, we do have some overhead power lines to deal with. If you would, we would like to resolve that with the planning staff, and we do commit to including those, but we would like the landscape architect to look at the plan and look at the constraints, so that we don't commit to something that we cannot produce.
Did you want to volunteer a number? We can give you a number, or you can volunteer a number.
Four.
And Mr. Potter, if you're coming forward, we would like to have your name, please, for the record.
I'm going to put in a big number. Now, actually, I'd like to add, from a rebuttal standpoint, a couple of things, just to emphasize that the overhead power lines are one issue, security and safety is another issue. This is a major transit stop that's at that corner, and Ms. Yoshimura, if you're a user of that Alaska Club on a regular basis, if you've noted the activity at the corner of Northern Lights Boulevard in Minnesota, including a lot of activity that's not the best that Anchorage has to show, security and safety is a big issue. So that's why putting in a lot of evergreen trees on that border is not really necessarily a wonderful idea, and is one of the reasons that it's pushed us more towards the deciduous trees that can be controlled in height and visibility, and being able to be safe and secure. Now, I would probably be willing to work with our client if the spread and ratios, if the trees for evergreens, these additional trade-out trees that you're talking about, could be done differently, because then we can have probably a satisfactory workout with a few bristlecone pines, which are wonderful trees that look contorted, are extremely hardy, and don't grow very fast, so they won't be up on the power lines.
How tall are those power lines?
They are probably about 20 feet, and that's why the trees that we've chosen, from a deciduous standpoint, stay down in the level of about 15 to 20 feet. If you've had evergreen trees that end up in the power line area, let alone, we have to get, this landscaping plan will likely have to be approved by the power company to install new trees within their easement, so... And I know that you've addressed that before on some of your plat activities, that the utilities get to tell you what you can and what you can't do within their easement on your property. So with some allowance, we will be flexible, and hopefully you will be too, and we'll work with the planning department to come up with a solution.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Yes, there was a, the alternative is more shrubs, and shrubs that don't grow more than 10 feet high or something. So if you do, come for shrubs, spread them out, so you don't clump, you know, create a hiding place or something for unsafe activities or people. You know, I'm not telling you how to gargle, but it's, I think you get the sense of the commission's desire. It's here to encourage the applicant to do the right thing here, and give us a little more year-round vegetation in the area.
We will go back and assure you that we will come up with something that's appropriate, safe, secure, and cost-effective.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. What is the wish of the commission? Commissioner Parks?
In the matter of case number 2012006, in the site plan review for a large retail establishment, Walgreens, I make a motion that we approve with the amended recommendations that were handed to us with one addition, number nine, which would be in reference to the snow removal that's listed on page 11H. And the only addition I want to put is within 72 hours, and I will make this statement, I am not for snow removal. But if you're going to do it, I think we, and you're going to say you're going to do it, then we need to get it in writing, so...
Okay. This motion is seconded by Ms. Dean. Do you agree with that addition?
I concur.
All right. Are there any other additions? Seeing and hearing none. Findings of fact?
I would like to make a couple of comments, if I could.
All right. Thank you.
I appreciate the effort to make this blend in to the existing buildings. I think that says a lot about Walgreens' commitment to the community and Dow's commitment to make it look a part of that building, and I'm very proud of that. That's number one. Number two, I think it meets all the big-box requirements that we have, and that's also nice when we don't have to make a lot of amendments, that we can have something that comes to us that meets it, and I appreciate that. It does meet all the requirements of the exterior signage, the pedestrian access, the aesthetic characters that we would want in our big box, and I would like to have that as one of the findings we have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other findings? Okay. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that is approved. Thank you very much.
Are there any appearance requests? Are there none? So, reports from the chair and the secretary, I think there is some question about whether or not we're having a meeting on January 30th. Is that... Mr. Barrett, can you give us any insight into what our requirements are regarding that?
Madam Chair, for January 30th, what we'd like to do is, if there is no Title 21 carryover, we would try and get the postponed case, the AMATS case, on that evening, January 30th. They don't really wish to wait until February. It puts some of their funding in jeopardy if the case gets delayed. That's all just come up this evening, so I'm not very familiar with it.
Let me ask the commissioners their availability on the 30th?
He's gone.
Out of state, and you're gone. You'll be here. However, you will need to, Commissioner Hickel, you will need to go back and listen to all of the work session regarding the AMATS and the Metropolitan Plan in order to be eligible to participate.
No, whatever it takes. I'm kidding. Anyway, whatever it takes.
Because he's disqualified himself from tonight.
But he disqualified himself from the APU case, it's not...
Oh, the APU cases, not the AMATS. My apologies.
APU case, I could catch up on that.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right. My apologies. Ms. Dean, are you available? And that's one, two, three. That's what we need. So if we could poll the absent commissioners, I believe in a prior email, Mr. Phelps said that he would be available on the 30th if it was important. Do we have to re-notice then the 30th? Because we're not going to be doing the Title 21, we're going to be doing the Metropolitan.
Right. That's...
It's just a postponement, so...
Okay, he's correct. The public hearing's been closed, it's a continued case.
Okay.
It would be noticed on the website.
All right. Okay. All right. Well, then, for those of you that are going to be in town, I think that's what we should plan for. And our current plan, I think, in talking to the various commissioners on an individual basis, we are prepared to open the public hearing for the Title 21 rewrite as advertised for the amendments that have been presented to us on February 13th, 12th? Is it the 12th or the 13th?
The 13th.
It's the 13th. It's February 13th. So we will be opening the public hearing. You can anticipate that we will probably have additional testimony beyond what the amendments are. It is our plan, then, to continue on after we close the public hearing with a variety of work sessions to bring us up to date. I think that I have spoken to each one of you about the additional support from the municipality, the mayor's office, for an outside consultant, so to speak, to assist us in proposing our own series of amendments regarding the various issues that we've been discussing. I am going to be gone the rest of this week and part of next week, so I will be back in touch with you on an individual basis regarding that process. What we have discussed in the past, earlier tonight, is the fact that any issue that is not covered by the current advertised amendments will have to be re-advertised. So once we decide upon the issues that we want to address, whether it's trailer parks or whatever it is, those items will have to be written up by our consultant in the form of amendments, and then advertised on the website and as part of a public hearing before we will be able to act on them. So that's the process that we'll need to be going through. Any other comments, questions? I would, I have one other thing that I would like to discuss, which is, we have a variety of committees, and I know it's been very difficult for some of you to participate in those committees, and in my discussions with various individuals who have been familiar with the planning process, I've consulted with them about how is it best that the commissioners can participate in the long-term planning process? And the recommendation to me was that, at the time that the Long Range Planning Department decides upon a plan and decides upon a consultant, that the recommendation was that the Planning and Zoning Commission meet with a consultant in a work session to sort of get the feel of what the long-term plan... of what the long-term plan or neighborhood plan might be, and for us to be able to address any concerns specifically that we might have, say, for example, as it relates to the government hill plan. And then have that consultant come back to us a second time before the public review draft goes out, so that they can report back to us in terms of what the community's concerns have been. So that we would have two opportunities for discussion with the consultant prior to the review of the public draft. And of course, any commissioner who would like to attend any of the neighborhood meetings would, is certainly welcome to do that. Does that sound like a reasonable plan that we could recommend to the planning director? I'm getting some nods. Yes? Mr. Hickel?
I concur with the chair.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dean?
Yes, I agree.
Yes, Mr. Parks, yes? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mulcahy. All right, very good. Would you make that note for the record, then? Thank you very much. All right. Do we have a motion for adjournment? Moved and seconded, I need a second, by Mr. Hickel. Thank you very much, this meeting is adjourned.
Okay.